City Council and Parks Advisory Committee and North Bend Urban Renewal Agency work session for Monday, April 26, 2021, 4:30 PM here in our council chambers. And we want to recognize that we also were recording and we have people on Zoom. Our former mayor would start, often start the meetings with, "We want to have a kinder, gentler form of government." And so I've been thinking of what my tagline would be. And it's in a work in progress, but I definitely want to say that we will have professional decorum. Are we good, Kaylee? Yes, so I like that. I like the kinder, gentler form of government, but also spin on what our expectations are in these chambers, and that is to maintain professional decorum at all time. And those expectations are for our guests that are joining us and our council members and of course, the staff as well. So with that being said, we're going to go ahead and our number two item on the agenda is we have several discussions today. And the first one is about Ferry Road Park Disc Golf Pilot Update. So we have, I believe, is our committee chair Eric Gleason, Council Gleason. Did you have some information to share or where did we want to begin with this discussion?
I wanted to begin with him.
Thank you. All right, so thank you, Council. We have on with us today Jason Nieber. He is out of...
That's right.
Hello, yes. Oh, okay. Introducing you, so give me just a moment there, Jason. He's out of Oak Ridge, Oregon. And for a little background, back in April of last year, the city council had approved Disc Golf. Disc Golf had already been in the city, Jason Park. This was for an introduction into Ferry Road Park. There was a nonprofit organization that raised all the money, bought the equipment. There was a plan formulated. It was put before the governing body. The governing body gave the green light. Fast forward, I came in in October of 2020. There was some concerns over a couple of the holes, baskets, and there was a compromise. So they had worked through some of the compromise. In early this year, I went ahead working with the Parks Department and did a pilot of the course layout that took in place those... that took in place those compromises. And nothing was placed in permanently. It was all done in a way that we could move things as we would go through the adjustment. During the pilot project, we rolled out signage throughout the entire park, letting folks know that it was a pilot, letting them know how to contact us either by phone, by email, or over the web. We went to the airwaves. We went on the radio. We went on local TV. We were in print. We were on the web. We were on social media. Everything we could to get feedback. And that feedback has been provided to the council. The Parks Advisory Committee has also had all of that feedback. It's been posted on their agenda site, on the website. In fact, the whole public's had access to it. Over the weekend, actually on Friday, Friday, you have at your seat a putter or disc, what they call it. I can't really tell you much other than I took a photo. The gentleman at the store locally was trying to explain to me what the numbers are, and it's a little more than I could digest at the time, so I took a snapshot of it. But understand that this is a entry-level putter. So if you want to go out to Ferry Road Park and sort of test it or try it yourself or see, you know, by all means, it's on my dime, enjoy it. But I figured if we were going to look at it, I better figure out what it all is really about. So I'm trying to learn myself. So you have that, those discs are on my dime. It's well under the legal limit for ethics, so you're all good. Don't get in trouble with ethics violations for gifts. The feedback, I got some data that was provided from staff. To date, we've had 186 communications come in either via email, on the web, et cetera, that staff has calculated, tabulated, 186, all positive for the course. We've gotten 34 emails against. That breaks out to 85% and 15%, so 85% for, 15% con. It was brought up in the process about, what do we know where these folks live? So we updated it and actually started asking for their address and zip codes and things of that nature. There were concerns about the picnic tables in relation to the...
T-box?
What are they called?
T-box.
Thank you. The T-boxes, where you throw the disc from. And so they said that the picnic tables are heavily used. So we have had deer cameras in the park. Actually, from the day that we put the first basket in, we've had these cameras and we have moved them in the park as we, that was part of the pilot. We just didn't go out and say, hey, there's cameras, but we've had them out there. So for instance, on these picnic tables, we've been watching them because folks thought staff was moving them, and that wasn't the case. I will tell you, like, for instance, between April 5th and April 22nd, the camera caught on the tables down by the grove, they were used twice. So they're not an issue, in our opinion. That's the staff, you know, we have the proof to back it. There's been concerns in the emails about smoking. We checked, there's no ordinance on the books about smoking in parks. And that doesn't mean that the council can't create an orange. Doesn't mean that we could put signs up saying or encouraging no smoking. It doesn't mean that we can't, you know, put out, you know, these cigarette butt cans where folks can put their butts. But right now, in our city parks, there's no ordinance on our city books for smoking in parks. Council, you're looking at me like maybe there's some county or state that would trump us, but...
No, there were some signs, and I know that the county had worked with the Parks Board before I got on regarding smoking in parks. And there was some signs that were put up as kind of a stopgap, but I didn't know how far it went, so.
Yeah, according to our city planner, we have no ordinance on our books. And so, so there's options there where we could put up signs or we could put up cigarette butt things. There was concerns on the negativity that there's profanity, that there's increased use of marijuana usage or smoking, that there's increased vaping, that there's increased trash, that there's increased cigarette butts. Staff's monitoring this since the first of the year. There's no accuracy to it. In fact, we have actually photographed folks in the parks picking up and disposing of trash. They also are going to the trashcans and they're picking up recyclables. So they're actually taking stuff out. You can put signage up, but it's not going to control folks. Folks are going to do what folks do. For instance, you can put up all the signage you want in the parks and folks will still use the parks, but it doesn't generate complaints. For instance, example is you have a baseball field over there. Folks use it as an unofficial dog park. The signs say, "No dog park used," but it's not something that raises complaints because they do it responsibly. They pick up after themselves. It's not an issue. So staff hasn't made it an issue, if you will. So at what point do you bring it to sort of full circle culmination? So in working with the chair of the Parks Advisory Committee, I had reached out to the Professional Disc Golf Association and with his blessing said, "Let's have an independent evaluation." And then that individual met with the Parks Advisory Committee, was able to hear everything he had to say. He spent about eight hours on site. He actually played the course. He's played previously at Windsor. I didn't realize how long Windsor had been here, so I learned something new, but early in the stages. He engaged with folks. He had access to all of the documents, the emails, everything systematically went and tried to evaluate. For instance, there was complaints that these putters, these discs, you know, were cutting, slicing into the trees. You'll have full access to ask them. But long story short, I learned that the Professional Disc Golf Association is located, if I remember correctly, Acworth, Georgia, which is on the north side of Atlanta. It was actually not far from where I was, on the north side. They put me in contact with a gentleman that handles all of the Disc Golf directories for the association. He's in California, I think in the LA area, who then put us in contact with this professional member who's out of, like I said, the Oak Ridge area, which I think is north of here somewhere. And he sent a resume. He's a Professional Disc Golf Association rules official and has been since 2018. He's a certified PDGA instructor. In fact, he has previously taught Disc Golf at Oregon Coast Community College in Newport, Oregon. He's had his hands in collaborating or designing six golf courses. He has served on the Newport Parks and Rec Commission, and he understands your life a little better than you might think because unfortunately, unsuccessfully, he ran for Newport City Council, but wasn't successful. So we had him come in, do a assessment, and with that, we're going to allow him with the council's discretion to give his report. And then you have a joint meeting. You're open, Madam Mayor, to entertain questions and dialogue with him, and it's handed back over to you.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and begin with the presentation.
Yes, hello. My name's Jason Nieber, and I am currently from Oak Ridge, Oregon, which is by Eugene area. And I have experience with life on the coast. I've lived in Newport, Oregon for 12 years and designed three courses in the area during my tenure. And like David said, I was a part of the Parks and Rec Committee there. You know, got pretty heavily involved in city functions. And currently, actually, I'm part of the Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce in Oak Ridge, Oregon here, and I'm also on the Parks and Rec Committee here as well. So just a little background information. But yeah, so I evaluated the Ferry Road Park course according to five guidelines for the PDJ, Professional Disc Golf Association, and that's safety, number one. For fun, is it fun? You know, does it kind of entertain people? Is it challenging? Is it integrate with the park appropriately? And is it able to be managed properly if it's installed? And my evaluation said a checkmark for all of the above. It was very, very well laid out. I did have some suggestions for holes seven and eight, which are towards the back of the course, which do cross some pathways there that they might want to think about maybe replacing somewhere else, but not a huge deal. But yeah, basically, it doesn't interfere with the picnic table area as David mentioned. It actually shoots away from them. And I played the course when I was there, probably about three or four times through each time, just trying to see if there was a problem and shooting different ways in order to see, okay, if I forehand this shot, is it an issue? If I backhand this shot, is it an issue? If I do this, you know, just throwing in different methods, seeing whether something could be a safety issue. And I didn't see really anything that would get in the way. You know, the course does cross, the fairways, the courses do cross some pathways, walking pathways, but there, the holes, the tee pads are near enough to the pathways where it's not an issue. You can, you get high visibility. If you see somebody coming, that I don't think it's really a problem. Like I said, the only, the only holes that I was thinking could be maybe redesigned were holes seven and eight, which are towards the back, where I think it's, what's the name of that road back there? But it's kind of like a loop people can do under the bridge.
A loop.
Yeah, yeah, that, that area was kind of a little dicey, but you know, it's plenty, there's plenty of room in the, in the park, I think, for a few extra holes that they could probably redesign anyway. And like I said, not a huge deal, just I could see that maybe being an issue. And I guess one, just one more thing I'd like to say is I think it's, the location's beautiful because Windsor Park is just right there. So somebody could play around at Windsor Park, come across the street and play around at Ferry Road Park, which would make, I guess, 18 holes, because there is only nine holes there, because safely, that's what all that could really be there is probably nine holes. And the designers and the people that worked on the course did a really good job. I think, I mean, you guys are going above and beyond a lot of this, you know, working with the community to make sure, like, okay, we'll adjust this, we'll adjust that. And you're never going to be able to please everybody. I mean, that's something that I've learned throughout my Disc Golf ventures, but at least you can please most people. And it looks like that's been done. So that is pretty much what I got to say, and I would like to take any questions that anybody has.
Okay, thank you. We did lose video monitoring, and it could be because I kicked something under the table, but...
Oh.
Did it come back on?
It did not, but I didn't know if, I mean, I can see him and I can hear him.
It's disconnected in fact, so it's going to be under there and stayed crawling around under everybody's feet right now.
But at this point, we're not sharing any maps or anything, so I think we're okay. But I just wanted to let you know that I, that we lost his visual, but I can see over Pat Ball's head, and we can see Eric.
Did you see her clothes there or what?
Yeah, reflection. So this is a joint meeting between, or joint work session between the council and the Parks Advisor, or Parks, between the Parks Advisory Board. And so I do want to ask Eric Gleason if he, how he wants to facilitate this discussion. I will say that I'm glad that, I'm glad that our presenter mentioned that we've been going through this information in detail over the last few months, because it is really important to us that we make the decision that's best for the park and best for the citizens and best for the use of everybody. And these are precious resources that we want to take care of. And so if, you know, I don't expect to necessarily have a decision today if we still have questions, because we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. Also, with that being said, Ferry Road Park has had Disc Golf being played in it before the pilot, and we're not here today necessarily to make a decision whether or not we're allowing Disc Golf, because that is already allowed in the park. But whether we want to continue the pilot program or we want to move around the temporary baskets, or if we then also as a council, since this is a joint session, go back to our, I had a breath today, go back to our, our Parks Committee Chair and, and give them some more work to do. That is, that is an option. I do so, I also, for just full transparency, because I want to respect the process of our committees, I do want to let our, our Council Gleason Chair know that I received a packet of information from one of the Parks Committee members who spent a lot of time and consideration gathering, gathering information, and I respect that and I appreciate it. But I also want to make sure that you have those details, and we'll share them with you as well. So I'm thrilled that we have so much citizen involvement and that we have people showing up to the meetings and taking this very seriously. So with that being said, Council Gleason and Chair of the Parks Committee, did you have an idea on how you wanted to proceed?
I wanted to, I wanted to hear what Jason had to say. I know that we, we had talked to him last week, was it last week?
Two weeks ago.
At Ferry Road and had him explain some of these things that he was feeling there. I know that he went over and looked at Pittam after the meeting, and you said that you thought it was a little dicey over there, is that what you said?
Oh, yeah. Oh, you mean in the woods, like kind of down the road a little bit or? Yeah, I mean, it's thick, it would have to be brushed so, so much.
Yeah, it's pretty dense over there. And I know that we have different feelings from our, the individuals on our board. I also was in receipt of that information last night. I haven't had a chance to go through all of it yet, but I got it later last night, but it was very educational as far as some of the information that was in there. I don't know, I don't know the best way to go about going through this outside of just having a discussion of this too. What are the hot topic items? What do we need to ask Jason while he's here, when we have him? And I think we get information from him and then we kind of figure out where to move from there.
So if I may, Madam Mayor. So he has made very specific recommendations, and there's a couple ways. One, administratively, staff can go ahead and implement that. For instance, he stated that hole number one needs to be tweaked. Hole seven and eight don't work in the existing configuration, so we need an alternative for those. He's talked about some labeling and things. And I will tell you, I personally walked the course and photographed the course on Sep- Friday, and I'll tell you that I saw sort of firsthand some of the things he put in his report because it was confusing. I zigzagged a couple of times trying to figure out where I was supposed to be, so I get it. And so that's one approach. The other approach is take the recommendations, send them to the committee, and see if they'll come back with recommendations, giving what the council has heard through the league's training and the fact that we're probably going to do some of the committee rules. It's up to you as to whether or not you want to do that, wait, you know, that's really the will of the council, because we have the issue that the trainer address that sort of pits you with some of the state issues.
Well, I'd like to speak on the safety aspect. You know, that's, that's a number one, you know, what he looks for, number one. And my question is, is with the adjustments, the hole seven and eight and possibly one, is that going to impact the safety of the course?
In a beneficial way.
That, yeah, okay, that, yeah, that's what I meant, absolutely.
Yeah. So one, I actually think, one is okay. It's just a teapot location, so when I played it, I played it once and then I started to play it again, and then I talked to a neighbor that was walking a dog, and I kind of just asked her opinion. And I'm like, oh, what do you think of the course? You know, and she's like, oh, it's, it's great, I don't mind it. But people tend to hang out on the pathway, number one here. So I was thinking, if people tended to do that, they could, we can move the teapot a little further into the brush or, you know, towards the brush. But it's kind of back there a little bit, so maybe, and it was, she was just, it was just a suggestion by her, but just as long as people kind of probably stay off the pathway when they're like teeing off and stuff like that, I think that was the main issue for number one's teapot area. And as far as seven and eight are concerned, I do think there's ways that we can incorporate some of the other land area there. There's actually a really nice fairway right along, I believe it's the, oh man, northeast southeast side of, that kind of long Ferry Road itself that could be utilized. And then in between holes one and two currently, there's a lot of room. And I wasn't sure why there wasn't a hole kind of in between them, but I later learned that that was part of the compromise and agreement between, you know, the whole process, which I understand as well, so.
That's the area by the grove, going down by the grove.
Damn it.
Councilor Goll has a...
I, yeah, well, thanks to start with. Thanks for your effort there. I, you know, I'm a shotgun shooter, and if I'd had a shotgun guy go in there and say, can we set up a sporting clays course here? He'd have probably said yes, but you're a golfer and you gave us your honest opinion. That, that, that is my, I have nothing against frisbee golf. I've played that Windsor golf and lost several frisbees in there when it was first put in. You made the statement of too much brush under the bridge and, and that direction. Well, this whole park was covered with that much brush, and so it's, it's just timing.
God damn it.
Uh-oh, who is that?
Anyway, it wasn't me that said, "God damn it." Anyway, I, I don't know, I, the only heartburn I've got, and trust me, I, and I guess that's the good thing for this pilot program, because we're getting right close to the middle of baseball season or, you know, primetime baseball. And that, there's been thousands and thousands of North Bend kids come through that baseball program. And if we can, if we can, the only ones I question is, and I don't know if that's three or four that comes around the north, northwest corner, 99% of the baseball fans walk up the west side of that field to the bleacher area or sitting between the gazebo and, you know, and that, there's two holes there that, and I don't know, there's no way with, where you got one and two and stuff, that you could come anywhere out of there. So if this thing would have all sat to the west of the parking lot, I'd have been tickled pink, but it's them through four holes that, and like I said, we're getting a primetime deal right now because it, with all the baseball fans, and if this thing does coexist, then we're going to know, you know?
I have to say that when we had our meeting a couple of weeks ago, there was a pretty large baseball practice going on. There were also families down there running around in the grassy, the west part over with the newer cleared area, right just west of that parking lot, playing soccer with each other, running around while other people were playing. It was the first time I'd ever actually been there to see so many things happening at the same time. I've had the same concerns about one through four and trying to get those moved over just from the multi-use aspect of it. But it was nice to see that there were so many different activities going on at the same time, and everything was happening somewhat harmoniously.
Well, like I said, I've lived here 62 years, and this is the first pilot program I've ever heard of, but I think it's, at least we're getting some good intel from, sure enough.
Absolutely.
I have a question for the Parks Chair. Was there, and I see Councilor Nordoff has a question, because what I'm hearing is that there is some concerns for hole one and seven and eight from our presentation today. Is that something then that would, we could back back to the Parks Group or administratively to figure out what it would look like to readjust those holes? You know, what, what, could we see that on a map, you know, at the next meeting? And was there any discussion during, when the Parks Committee Group was looking at this, about how, you know, reservations would need to be made for tournaments and things like that? So that it's not impacting parking?
We've discussed parking quite a bit, especially with the, like a baseball tournament going on at the same time as the Disc Golf Tournament, probably is a nonstarter. The Disc Golf Group has mentioned on more than one occasion that they wouldn't have a Disc Tournament during a baseball tournament if there was some planning around it, right? Just because it doesn't, it doesn't work for anybody at that point.
How was, is that, are those, are the baseball games, is it...
How was, is that, are those, are the baseball games, is it published somewhere where people would have access to the information so that there isn't that crossover?
So, so there's a couple of things and, and this is part of, believe it or not, all of that was covered way back when. I, I, it was all pointed out to me that when they actually were conceptualizing this, that they had discussed about, for instance, taking things out of play, handling the scheduling, things like that, coordinating. And so all that coordinated, please don't shake your head and say, no, I was given the documents, they exist, okay? Councilor Nordoff, please, I'll respect you, you need to respect me. So they showed me the documents because I was raising my hand thinking I was coming up with something new that I saw at another location of where they could potentially have bags that go over the baskets, put them out, out of service.
To lock up.
Exactly, and so, so I reached out and, and that's where they said, you know, we sort of kinda already discussed all this. And, and, and so they'd given us some of the documents and the draft language and the rules and things that were being bantered back and forth. We did the pilot as it would lead up to the season so that we didn't have really conflict. We wanted to figure out whether or not it would work or not without having many, you know, sort of issues. We could move things, test things, you know, but no alternate suggestions came out once we rolled them out. So they've been in where they've been in. There are these bags or things, I understand, that can go over out of service. And also through the parks of the reservation, because we have the master schedule, we're sort of able to do that. We can also put signage. But the fact that people just come here for disc golf versus say the, the baseball, I think the only real reason is you gotta figure out how to put those baskets out of service. You can't just, I don't think just putting up a sign, you sort of gotta take them out of service. And so that was some of the discussion in play. Jason's right, the recommendation, hole seven and eight, he expressed safety concerns. Because folks come around that road and if you've already thrown, you know, it's actually a speed issue. In fact, I spent quite a bit of time on Pittam Loop and I'm sort of the opinion we oughta put out some rubber road humps. Because as we were out there, I literally, some of the, the members literally had to like, whoa, get out of the road. Because they're using that like a racetrack. And so the only way you're gonna slow them down is force them to slow down or do a road diet. But if you sort of put some of those, because they were going, and the same thing with, with the road, you know, leading down to the industry. Folks are coming around that corner a tad bit too fast. We haven't, you know, so, so that was the concern you're throwing across. So as I went through every single, what do they call them, I call them baskets. But as I went to each basket or tee or whatever hole, you know, I was photographing to see what I'm seeing, you know, at, at six foot, you know. Sort of looking at the parameter, where the discs are going, what, what the field ranges are. And so I, I was doing that independent of the, the report so that I could sort of kind of see, you know, some of what he had said at the meeting. And then whether or not there was any real substance. And so I, absolutely, you know, those two holes are concerned. I know the area that he has suggested, you know, move one or two of them. You know, there's an issue in the park and we're gonna have to address it through a whole nother issue, which is sort of the tree plan in the park. Because there's some trees being planted in the grove that just are not the right type trees that ought to be in the grove. They're, they're good on the ancillary area. And so you don't wanna be too close to those tight trees.
So I do, I wanna jump in here really quick, Mr. City Administrator, because I know that Councilor Nordoff had a comment. I believe I saw Tim Slater motioning and we do have other people in the room from the committee that might wanna add to this something. So again, as a reminder, this is, these are our precious resources in our community. People are passionate about this and I really want to make sure that we have a chamber here that is professional and that we're contacting ourselves in that way so that we are being able to be heard and that we can move through this together. So, Councilor Nordoff, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I noticed that hole number nine is, it ends with the goal basket being in line with the parking lot. And I have a concern that when good players are throwing, that it's gonna end up being in the parking lot and, and causing damage to cars. I also have a question as to who will be responsible for, if, if, if it's decided that the course needs to be shut down because of softball activities? Who is going to be responsible for putting the, the blinders over the baskets? I have a concern about insurance. If somebody does get hit because there are four holes, at last glance, I believe four holes, fairways, cross the bike path. If somebody gets injured wherever they are, it's my understanding that that person is responsible for their own insurance. Even if they get hit and knocked, knocked in the head with one of the harder discs that the experts use, that is on them, even if they're on the bike path. If they get smacked by a disc, it's, it's their problem.
Okay.
Their medical problem. And I haven't heard any discussion of how parking is going to work with regard to tournaments. Because some of the parking, as I understand it, extends along all the pavement that surrounds Ferry Road Park. We have really never heard from the Park Superintendent on any of these things. We've heard through David, we've, we've had, heard from our, our designer now. But there are some unanswered questions here that I'm hoping can get resolved.
Okay, so I think, I feel like some of those are real easy to answer, do we wanna?
Let me address my end, we can punt to Jason on theirs. On the insurance, doesn't matter if you're riding a bicycle, if you're walking, if you get a baseball, softball, what have you. We are a city, we have immunity. We've addressed the insurance issue, we've engaged with our insurance company, we're good, asked and answered. As far as the physical locations, I'll point that back over to you, Jason. But before I do that, the Park Superintendent answers to me and I engage with the Park Superintendent. So I've already engaged, I already communicated to the council that I engaged with him to find these covers. We didn't wanna go ahead and expend any money until we knew whether or not it was going to even be a fit and whether it was going to even stay or work. I didn't wanna put expense in something that hasn't cost the city anything because everything you see in there was, was donated. I mean, even these discs you have, they were donated, they were fundraised. The only thing that the city has spent any money was on this assessment, which I actually used tourism tax. Because what I heard from everyone was actually this is tourism bringing in. Every business I went to, even where I bought these, was telling me from his database where everybody comes from. It brings people into our community. And so when I look also at the tournaments, but nothing else has cost the city. There's nothing in that park that has cost the city taxpayers one penny.
So before we punt back to our presenter, so just to reiterate, you were saying the blinders, that would be something that the Parks Department would do as they unlock the bathrooms for the day.
Like they do already.
Secure those, okay, so. Yes?
May, I just wanna throw something in too, just to be completely clear regarding the issue of, of an injury or, or not. Susannah, there probably could potentially still be, excuse me, Councilor Nordoff, half start doing that. There could potentially be disputes between the person who threw the frisbee and the person who got hit with the frisbee about who would have to pay for it, but the city would have immunity.
Is that similar to how, like if somebody was hit with a baseball?
Same deal, I mean, any, anything happening in the park that is a regular activity in the park, the, the city would be immune. But, you know, if, if you have two adults, you know, that are participating in their own recreational activities and they accidentally hurt each other, that's, if they wanna fight. Their insurance companies may wanna fight about whose fault was worth how much money before everything's said and done, but the city will not have to get involved.
Okay.
This, this is so that, you know, that's why all that extra signage was put in is because we did the insurance assessment. And part of the immunity was, these are all the signs that you have to have. And so that's why you saw that whole effort. And so the, the, the signs themselves were, were still weren't paid by the city. Anything carried off was, I think it was about a hundred dollars worth signed. But we built the kiosk, but those went to every park that wasn't specific, so.
Okay, so we'll go back to our presenter who's gonna answer the question about hole nine. And if, the Councilor Nordoff was saying, if they hadn't extended the throw, does it still meet the safety needs?
The short, the short answer is yes. So, so basically what the rule of thumb is for PDJA guidelines is it has to be at least with it, outside of circle one, it's called, which is thirty feet. So if you measure that basket to the, that basket, that, there's like a basketball hoop there, that's right on the edge, that's like probably about a good fifty feet away. So it's plenty of clearance.
Chair Gleason, I know that you have some Parks Committee members here and one of the committee members, Andrea Sherman, I believe, had, may have had her hand up. Did you wanna call on any of the committee members?
Yeah.
If you do, just have, come to the mic, please.
If you wanna, Andrea, if you wanna come.
I appreciate the, the energy being put into this and this evaluation because it is important, it's a valuable resource. So thanks for all the time and energy that has been put in. I, this is not a letter writing contest and disc golf is an organized group. So when we say how many letters have been received, I think it's really important to remember that individual park users are not being encouraged by their friends to write letters with their feelings or experiences there. Also, I don't know how far back those letters go because I know there were at least twenty-five last October and I know there have been more since then. One thing I've been hearing here is a lot about baseball versus disc golf. Baseball's a season and then it's gone. Ferry Road Park is our main gathering park, it's, we lost Simpson's Covered Area. That park is used all the time for birthday parties, memorials, reunions, and there's only one reservable spot in the back. The rest people show up and hope that, you know, I've seen people there at seven-thirty in the morning, sitting in the other non-reservable for a birthday party at eleven and they rotate to hold that. So if you have a reunion in the back, that sometimes fills the whole parking, memorial service, whatever's going on in that back space. Then you add the birthday party and you add disc golf, you add the walkers that come and drive in to walk. That parking is a huge issue when on event days, whether it's a birthday party or reunion or disc golf tournament or baseball. Baseball's huge. So when we look at, Alexa asked at one of the park meetings if you could put no parking signs, I think it's basket seven. Because the discs will dent and the cars like a, like a door ding and break taillights. I actually saw one of the disc golfers break their own taillight in the parking lot messing around. So it can be an issue and then if, if somebody comes back and their taillight's broken, they just have to deal with that because there's nobody to hold accountable for that. And then so that they, the question of putting one of the baskets from seven and eight along Ferry Road, then you have the same issue as along Chappelle. You have a lot of parking anytime there's any big event that people park right along there, which would be right along that throwaway, just like basket number seven is right along Chappelle. So same kind of parking issue there. And then, you know, I, I liked your example of, you know, if you're looking at, if you're a disc golfer, this is awesome. If you're in the band and making all the noise, you're not recognizing someone who doesn't appreciate that music. So we have a lot of park users that come for the atmosphere. And so is there a way to balance this and respect the current and historic use of this park? And the community members that are not an organized group with a vocal represent, representative to, to pull together? And respect that they come for the peaceful atmosphere, the environment. And they're, they're compromising a lot because they come to get away from home, to get outdoors and to relax. And you can't relax in a disc golf course. Can you relax in a golf course when you're walking, you gotta be aware. You can't run into a friend on the path and enjoy a conversation if you're in the middle of a game. There has to be some compromise here, so we, we still have some work to do to figure out how to meet the needs of a growing special interest group and our community. And it's a big decision. And that's, you know, I don't know how many letters Mr. Millian said we have, but I don't think the numbers count. We're still here right now discussing it because people value that park. If they didn't, this would have been a done deal a long time ago, a year ago. And here we are a year later because it's a big deal to our community.
And I think that that's why we are here because it is a big deal to us too.
Yeah.
We wanna make sure that we make the right decisions.
Right.
Not just here, but in all of our parks.
Right, and in our whole community, we don't have much, we don't have anything else like Ferry Road Park and Coos Bay Parks, North Bend Parks. We don't have anything that offers what it offers. And I wish we had more land to accommodate both user groups' ideas of what that space should feel like. I respect, is it Justin, is that right?
Yes.
Jason?
Jason.
Jason, I respect your evaluation. I, I don't think necessarily that the safety of the course really determines whether it's the best fit. That's from a disc golf perspective only and, and how that interfaces with park users as a rule of thumb safety for what's acceptable. Seems like in the disc golf world, occasionally getting hit with a disc is an acceptable situation. But if you're a park user, that's, that's not acceptable ever, if you're not a disc golf player in, in your world, right? So I appreciate that and I, and I hope that we can place equal value on what he said as far as saying the same thing as a park user who goes there who's not comfortable around disc golf, that it would be as valuable.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We have, I believe, some councilors that might have a comment, did you want to, Councilor Slater, did you wanna make a statement before we go to another committee member?
Pardon me?
Did you wanna make a statement before we go to another committee member? I know we're just continuing the discussion, but I wanna make sure that we all have a good flow of this conversation.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to have committee members here and I wanna ensure that we get as many of those that wanted to speak to speak in that way. I, I think a basic and, and I appreciate the work that's been done to analyze the course. There are apparent, if you haven't won, there's some fine tuning to go, I think Pat's pointed out some of that. And Eric and, and several in that particular way. I, I think the baseline issue, as we look at it, and it was pointing out, lots of things go on there, lots of things can go on there. I think as, as a council, first of all, I appreciate the inputs from every side that's giving us inputs that way. I appreciate the work of David in getting experts in, you know, to look over, does this make sense or not make sense in that particular way? Because one of the things to try to do is not only listen to the people, but also look at the data and, and the actualities that are there. There are some things that are historical uses, but you know yourself, throughout life, uses change and evolve, you know, as, as things go on that way. I, I think from our side, you know, I'm, I'm perfectly happy with letting the, the committee work through some of those changes and designs to make it safer. But I do believe that's commensurate with one action. I think the council has to indicate, I'm not sending this out to you to fiddle around with it, to come back and we say, no, that's not good, go do something else. That's not really making a decision. So I think it's, it's council's responsibility to say, yes, we believe that a disc golf course there would make sense, it would be utilized and it'd be safely put there. Therefore, work on the design or no, you know, as I look at that, I really don't think that fits in every aspect of that. Therefore, we don't, we don't wanna pursue that side. But I, I think that's, that's our decision point that really has to be made before, you know, we, we send it off to be worked on.
So we really haven't had a summer with both activities, is that correct? I mean, really and truly.
Baseball's just kind of.
Correct.
Yeah.
But let me, let me ask this because this is maybe where I have wrong information. I thought disc golf course, that disc golf has been played there throughout the summer. It was just temporary baskets.
Just tournaments.
No.
That's what I.
Can I, can I ask one of the committee members?
Yes, so, um, so we have had tournaments. The, the July Jubilee was happening very long before I even came to North Bend. But then we also have, so there's doubles usually that are held on weekends. And on occasion, it's not every weekend, but people would bring their personal baskets from home and put them up at Ferry Park in a similar layout to this with some small changes. But I believe this kind of layout was originally kind of based upon the July Jubilee and that was happening before we started.
I'm, I'm not denying that this would increase the use of that. But I'm just saying that it has, have, they have coexisted in the past and.
Right.
But it just wasn't more of a semi-permanent basket, yeah. Councillor Gleason, did, uh, was there other committee chairs that wanted? Oh, sorry, this is Brown. Do you want to come on?
Thank you for having us today. I did like what councillor Slater was saying because there's a lot of work put in for that group to clear and set up certain areas. So I think it does need to be decided by the council. If yes, it works at this park and it's there to stay, then come back to us to figure out that plan and then, you know, bring it back to you guys. Because there's a lot of, um, I feel that there's some people that aren't for it because they live in that area or are part of the community. And there's not a lot of compromise being done on that side. It's more like just, no, we don't want it there. So I think that does need to be resolved. And I'm not a frisbee golf player, but I've been to the park and I love it that it's so diverse that everyone's using it. And I think part of the community is or are disc golf players. So it's not just like some use for, it's just for certain things. I think it should be for all, for systems.
So just back to my point.
Thank you.
It hasn't been, it hasn't been in full effect over a course of a summer. So to me, it seems like that's going to give me better guidance whether it works or not. And how we get there, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but in some form, I think we need to have both activities be able to go on and see the results. And then we can make a decision, well, this is just way too much for this park to handle at one time. Or, you know, you know, like you said, everything's compromised.
Right.
I mean, that's the, that's the world.
And nothing's permanent.
At this point, no?
I would add, I mean, even, yeah. Add to that though, I, it, it does seem that the, that Jason has pointed out some things that would need to be addressed immediately. Seven, eight and one.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reality is, so, you know, um, as, as Andrea is, she's absolutely right. This is not a campaign of writing. What it is, is it's feedback, it's interaction. It, it's getting folks who care or not to communicate. And so as we would go through those, you know, we would respond to very viable action items where we could move things, change things, put signage, what have you. We would address those. The one thing that kept coming up over and over and over is, uh, it is one, safety and two, the fit. And that's just something I can't ask, answer. And so, so that's why I reached out to, to councillor Gleason and said, any objections if we bring in an independent voice that has nothing to do with North Bend, who has parks and rep experience and isn't all just about disc golf? In fact, you know, if you actually heard this gentleman's full bio, you'll find out he's actually involved in a whole lot more, all about parks and rep. So I could bring him in for an expert on other things. I also wanted to make sure that it was balancing out, um, uh, some of the local concerns. You're the elected officials, you know? You've got to have your ear to, to, to the ground and really make the decision that's in the best interest of the city. As administrator, my job is to get you the information and get you to the point where you can make a decision. So that's, that's sort of kind of almost where we are, if you will.
I believe councillor Gall, I see, uh, committee Andrea, and we haven't heard from committee member Michael Brainerd yet.
I'll just be a quick one. You know, that was my comment to start with, Bill, was the baseball just coming on and see if we could, and, and Mr. Sherman there made the comment of a multi-use park and, and, and I totally agree. I think, like I said, I'm not against frisbee golf. I would like to see frisbee golf be to the west of the parking lot because eighty percent of the rest of the park use, including the gazebo, including the playground, everything else is to the east of the parking lot. And I think that would be much easier coexisting than just those four holes going around. I had my cousin's memorial there last summer and that whole gazebo, that whole area, I mean, we were them, that were the, must be number three or something is. It was, we were full of people, you know? And, and I know that that'd be a scheduling event, but still, I, I, there's so much of that activity that, that goes on in that park that's to the east of the parking lot. That, I'll leave you alone.
Councillor Gleason, did you have another committee member that you wanted to call on?
Thank you for hearing me out. I, I, I wanted to, I definitely kind of thought the exact same thing as far as the baseball is concerned. I honestly would love to see this trial period go to the point where we can see how it fits in with the baseball games a little bit more before we start moving, especially honestly a whole once before round too much, um, to see if there is a, a problem with the baseball games going on. As far as being able to find a baseball tournament, I have looked myself and haven't had a whole lot of success with that. So if there is that kind of scheduling for the park or knowing like when they're having games and stuff like that, that would definitely help us organize our events around them. Usually we hold, I mean, my husband and I, not to say that there are some other disc golfers that hold events, but as far as our fundraising events go, we usually do maybe two or three a year. And those could easily be scheduled outside of the, and maybe during longer games. I'm not that familiar with baseball, but during the couple hours or however long the baseball game is going on. And even as far as this upcoming, we do have a fundraiser event coming up. And we could potentially even pay for the few bags that need to be put onto the baskets. That's what our fundraising project's for is to help hopefully make it so it's not an expense to you guys. Because it is something that we see growing and growing. And every time I go to Ferry Park, I'm meeting not only disc golf players that I've never met before, but women and children who are getting into it, which has been really exciting for me. There was a few other, um, I can't remember all the concerns that now that I wanted to address. I think, yeah, mostly extending out the, the trial period to give us a chance to see how that overlaps. Oh, and then just considering too, the amount of time, like she said, baseball is a seasonal sport. And the amount of people that are coming to play disc golf at this, at the, at Ferry Park has been amazing to me how many more people are coming and using the park. I don't know that, that should be limited necessarily because of concerns over poking. I definitely think that poking needs to be addressed, but I don't know that that is a reason why we shouldn't have a disc golf course there. And, and especially for tournaments, stuff like that, we could advise people or have what is called Tournament Central at Windsor. And, and that's, and kind of help direct traffic over there, but obviously we're not going to control how many people come and poke at, at Ferry when it comes to the disc golf stuff, so, yeah. Any other questions?
Well, now Michael wants to say.
So I've been pretty excited about the fact that this test run of the frisbee golf has definitely given back, um, feedback on what works, what's not working. Our last meeting was at Ferry Road during a baseball game and it looked like everything was going great. We didn't have any complaints from the, the golf, or not golf, but the baseball people about frisbees finding in the area. We didn't have any issues with baseball spying over the home run, hence hitting the, the group as we were discussing. So to me, it seems like it's working out very well. Also, a few weeks ago, there was a veterans group. They went there and were able to play frisbee golf. Some of them had some disability handicap, made it a little bit harder to play at Windsor because there's tree roots, there's slopes. And Ferry Road is definitely, I would say, probably the easier course in the city, even with Coos Bay. And I've seen where frisbee, disc golf courses have worked in multi-use parks, Bend is one of them. One of their holes is like a par five and it's a pretty long throw. So, and there, you know, I was talking to people, they were playing and it was working there as well. So I definitely think that I'd like to see, you know, this go through the summer, get a full idea of how it's going. And I'm not sure if, Jason, right? If he has any recommendations where to put seven and eight? Because I think we do need to get that moved pretty soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that all right if I speak? I'm sorry, is this Jason?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I just want to let you know that you guys went above and beyond by doing all the signage and everything and making the baskets temporary for this whole project. And hats off to you, the community really seems to be working together on this and that's very important. And yeah, I do have some recommendations on where to put those holes. I do think that there could be a hole in between holes one and two right now. And, and I don't know if the community could, you know, get together and work on that. And I do think there could be a hole along Ferry Road. There's like a cherry tree grove, I believe it is. It was blossoming pretty immensely when I was there and that would be, that would work really well as well. So those are my two suggestions. Or, um, brush out that area off a pit on there and that's where they can go as well. So there's, 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 there's several options. And you know, I, I understand, um, you know, it's, it's the combination of, of baseball and disc golf. And, and there's a lot of parks out there that do have that combination. Bend, Oregon has it, Dallas, Oregon has it. There's so many different, uh, because usually disc golf courses, uh, when it's, when there's not as much room, I guess, in the town for them, they are kind of put in multi-use facilities. And they tend to coexist pretty well, so.
Thank you.
One more thing, in the master park plan, it talks about the possibility of getting land back from the airport to use like the airport heights area for a park. And so that, that may be something worth looking at, but just as an alternative.
Thank you. You said Janet, right?
Councillor Gleason, is there somebody online that wanted to speak?
Janet's gonna, Janet's got her hand raised on Zoom. Can you hear us, Janet?
I can hear you, but I'm not able to get on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. I just want to kind of throw my support a little bit behind Tim Slater because I agree that things change over time. New things are always evolving. And, you know, it's a municipal park. Even, it's not really what I classify as a neighborhood park. And we need to try to accommodate the citizens if they want to try something new. Now, I also kind of agree with Bill Richardson. We'd have a better idea by the end of the summer if they went out there and, and just played throughout the summer. But I do agree, think that, you know, if we have the opportunity to add something new, then we should try. That's all I got to say.
Thanks, Janet.
Thank you.
I would say I agree with the imparts. I also support councillor Slater, councillor Richardson, as well as everybody else. The question is, we as a committee, we need to be told, yes, we're willing to keep going on this. If we want this, figure out how to do it, or no, we don't. And I think the only way to really figure that out is to try to get through the summer, to figure out really exactly what it means for have all of the big things that happened at, at Ferry Road Park happening at the same time. So we know where all the mistakes are. But we also need to have time to try to figure out if we can clear the brush underneath pit and loop to even move those, those other three to four holes. Because I don't disagree with you. I think that the first three to four holes need to be moved east. But we have to have space to put it. We have some adjustments that need to be made, um, like for seven and eight, for the safety of the, those holes. But if we don't have anywhere to go with them, then we're just taking holes, removing them and then you've got a four-hole course which seems somewhat pointless. If we could move the trial through the summer to try to fair, and, and we might stop it at any time once we realize this isn't safe, like this isn't working, right? But we won't know that unless we try it. But we also have to have time to figure out where to relocate the other holes. And right now, we don't have, we can't move them unless we just throw them in the brush and say, hey, good luck. But that's not, that's not feasible either. So this, this conversation has been going on so much, it feels like we just keep kicking it. And we need to make a determination whether or not, yes, this is something that we think that Ferry Road is going to be used for, so figure out how to make it happen, or we're just not willing to do it. But we need more information and I think that that means pushing this trial out a little bit longer so that we know what it means as a whole for the community, how busy that thing gets, how many problems.
I think Bill's suggestion was a good suggestion in a particular way. And on the, the clearing of the brush and that piece, you know, there's enough people interested in, in how this all fits together. We can put together a work party.
I agree.
And get out there and.
Honestly, I think it, there's a potential of it might make a better course out of it. But do you have any input on that, Jason? If you could get some creative holes in, um, you know, I guess I'm saying under the bridge or?
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent. Yep, it would, uh, it would embetter the course tremendously.
So.
Well, I think we ought to come up with a drop dead date or something. This, this is, you know, here's, we're an hour and a half into, uh, just frisbee golf and we got a lot of, you know, I, I think, you know, if indeed we want to give it the, the, the test of the summer and maybe somebody can investigate on what, what kind of, if we can even use that ground over on the other side, you know, I don't know, I don't know how all the rules go, but if, you know, and then, then get a work party and clear a couple holes, but I think we need to have a drop.
I like your idea of, of putting some time on it. So it sounds like what I'm hearing from the council is that there, but this is not the final plan. Like this is, this is not the final plan. But we would like, sounds like what I'm hearing is we would like to give our city administrator some direction to go back and immediately address seven and eight since we're, we're hearing from, um, the planner that those two are not safe. Also look, there's a potential to, to do something with one. We know that this will take time and if you, you know, we, we do need to remember that we have summer here. David's not, doesn't know this quite yet, but we do have summer, but our summer is really August, September and October.
Right, beginning of September.
Yeah. So I, you know, I'm just picking a date out of my head that, you know, maybe if, if we said October 30th, we'll see if we can try some different things. So seven, eight, look at one, see if there's interest in potentially doing something with the brush. I also have heard some conversations about the smoking and I know that's a completely different thing where we would have to revisit an ordinance. And it sounds like the county might have done some work on that. I would be all for having some sort of ordinance that says no smoking in North Bend Park. So we could look at that as well.
Well, the Coos Bay.
Did that.
And the Tobacco Prevention and Education Coordinator, Katrina McReynolds, I'm sure would be more than willing to have a conversation.
So did I just throw way too many things on the plate over there to our city administrator?
It has to be localized because, I mean, the county ordinance isn't going to affect on the city. The city has to make a decision because kind of can't control what you do in your city. And so, you know, if, if, if you want staff to look at a smoking ordinance, um, uh, you know, I've got a lot of experience on that, no problem. You know, a timetable on, on the pilot is always good. You know, and I, I very well may, um, reach out to Jason a little bit more and, um, you know, because, uh, you know, councillor.
and, you know, because, you know, Councilor Gold, you know, has mentioned multiple times, you know, the proximity of the parking lot. And to figure out, you know, we've seen one group come in with a design, okay? The question is, if Jason put on eyes and said, okay, we've got to try to figure out, could we get it here, get it there? You know, so I may lean on him to give some more professional advice on what can work. Because I want to, I want to keep this as objective as I can, but at the same time, move it forward and get it done if that's the way with the council. Meanwhile, I've said this to our park superintendent multiple times. You know, the disc golf folks are behind this effort. They've done all the hard work, they've raised all of that. Sometimes you go over the finish line, you know, let's organize a workday. And I've asked occasions, you know, would that work? And they seem to think that it would, which it would have to be multiple workdays because clearing all that brush and underbrush. But at the same point, I'm going to want a giraffe, pit on loop and the cars go way too fast. You know, I don't know, Chief, what your experience was, but I know one, two, three, four of us were on that street that evening after the meeting and on three occasions, I had to pull people away from the road because the cars whip around too fast. So that is other safety than if you're going to send people walking around there, then it raises another safety concern and I will raise my hand about the safety concerns.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If the city administrators don't, I just want to point out one thing, reiterating.
Well, I was just, Mrs. Devens, I was just going to add one more thing that I appreciate you using the tourism dollars for the funds that you've spent so far on the presentation. I think that's a really effective use because I do see the long-term plan of what it would be like to have tournaments here. And so if, this is getting a little bit more into the weeds, but if there were speed bumps put in there, is that something that the tourism dollars might be able to use it for that as well?
No, I'd go to Ralph and tell him to find money in his budget.
Okay. I like that for the overall idea of the park, but we'll just put a pin in that.
I don't think that's a good use of my tourism dollar around the humps.
Okay. So.
He's smiling behind the wave.
Mrs. Devens was going to say something and I think we have one more chair, one committee comment.
Yeah, and I'm just going to reiterate because the whole purpose of this work session, obviously, is to get everybody comfortable with what's going on and make sure communication is open. But Councilor Slater is correct. At the end of the day, the details and everything, this is another one of those, you know, city council is high, looking down from on high and the staff are going to do the nitty-gritty details. So try to keep that in mind as you get into some of this stuff.
So what you're saying is you're, that it would not be our job to have seven different counselors give a plan to David on where the hole should be, what brush needs to be cleared, and how to pay for things.
Literally, we don't need to get into the weeds.
Okay, gotcha. Well, then it sounds like we have a consensus to have the city administrator continue the pilot through October 31st and to look back on specifically addressing seven and eight as soon as he can and maybe even looking at hole one through four with a reorg.
Could I ask you about your October 31st? Why did you pick that?
I feel like that's when our summer is.
Well, the issue was baseball and whatever, and baseball, we didn't like.
Probably, yeah.
I mean, we could move the date, but I do think these.
They had anything to do with that baseball.
These things are going to take time if you're clearing brush, if there's the potential to clear brush. I mean, Councilor Norada?
Yes, I'm just wondering whether we could, as a group, ask staff to check out maybe two holes west of the bridge and look, maybe look at the topography and see if it would be reasonable.
The council's already deferred those options to your advisory committee. So we're waiting for the advisory committee to get feedback to the council.
Okay.
Perfect.
So, and Eric, you've got a couple committee members. I just want to make sure I'm mindful that this is a joint meeting and not trying to take over, that I saw a couple hands. Andrea?
Thanks.
Yeah, you're on.
Let's move again.
Just to, I need you to. So we keep again focusing on baseball. Remember, there are a lot of gatherings this September and October as well. Just a reminder of that. But one thing that keeps being overlooked that I don't understand is the goal is to have a better course for a group of people and growing sport for our community. And that's the goal here, right? Now, tournaments are not every day and they can have temporary baskets set up for tournaments. So if we took the Windsor course and had four baskets in there or five baskets in there, three to five existing baskets, and extended into the west side of the park or down under the bridge or whatever they designed that would make a really great course, then they have a really nice course. PDGA does not require 18 holes for a tournament. You take a really nice nine-hole course and you play it twice. So I'm not quite sure why we need the nine-hole Windsor course, which is not a great course. They throw back on themselves. It's really compact. So we do need a better course. This is a growing sport and it's really great to see all ages out there playing. I'm not against disc golf in any way. But I don't understand why this hasn't been explored. Why not extend the Windsor? Because it's a nice compromise. You keep the east side of the park clear of disc golf. They get a much improved course for daily play and they still have the entire park for tournaments. And you can have multiple baskets from one tee pad, which then they can make an interesting and complex tournament play. So why isn't that being explored?
I don't think anybody's brought it up. To be honest with you, that's the first that I heard.
I brought up the thought of coming out of Windsor.
Right, and going into the other.
We do have our, we do have our expert with his hand raised.
Literally.
Let's go ahead and hear Jason.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I like it. The only issue I see is if you want to have a fairly decent-sized tournament that's actually going to grow, that's actually going to draw like tourism kind of style there, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't be able to have as many people be able to be playing in the tournament. Because you could only have up to five people per tee pad. So that's why 18 holes would be double that.
But for tournaments, you can still have 18. You can have the Windsor course as it is.
Oh, yeah. That's true, yeah.
You've got a nice 18-hole course for a tournament.
Yep, you're right.
You're saying bring out the extra temporary baskets to extend the course for the tournament.
I got you. Yep, now I understand. Yep, yeah, that's great.
Yeah. So, yeah. I know that, like, I feel like we could go around this all day long and that we have given our city administrator some direction. Was there anything that you felt like we were not clear on?
You all had some ambiguity on how far you want your pilot to go out to. I know it's my pilot, but it's really for your purpose. So you, it was like volleyball. I'm not sure what the date is. I heard October 31st. I heard the baseball season at the end of, I think, August, somewhere in there, so I.
Sounds like compromise would be September 30th.
Do we have one final comment from the committee?
Yeah, it's just a quick question, actually, I would ask for the council. If you do basically recommend that we make changes, it would be awesome if I could get kind of at least some kind of direction, I guess. We've made compromises to the layout before and I don't really honestly feel like I really got a city council really liked compromises or if we were just compromising with a few concerns, that would be the reason at that time. So if you guys can let us know, like, you know, our priorities are no conflict with baseball game and you're fine to go into this, give us kind of some direction as to what you think about compromises that I can make.
So if I can weigh in there? So I try to be as transparent as I can. I think that this council tries to be as transparent and we try to put things out there. So I've taken notes throughout the meeting of things that I'd like to address and work on. You know, I said that, you know, we're hoping to be able to engage on a comprehensive update to our Parks Master Plan. You know, hoping to kick that off, you know, in July, if all goes well. And so as part of that, that's part of the process of looking and evaluating. But you have to have available space, things where you can actually expand. And so I'm going to be looking to have our park superintendent like coordinate with the different groups, baseball, pickleball, you know, T-ball, what all these sports are. And see if we can't start cleaning up around, because there's a lot of things that we could do around Pitton Loop and elsewhere in the city if it was cleaned up. You know, we'll evaluate the smoking ordinance and see if we can't get that, you know, before the council and see what you all think about that. You know, I learned from Jason during the meeting that there's actually, you know, I've heard some of the tree safety issues and he actually pointed out a city that actually does it very well with their disc golf course. So, you know, I split up some of the things with our park superintendent and we both were going to try to explore some of that. You know, the one council member had talked about the, you know, the conflict of the parking lot, you know. So that's why I said that I would try to engage some possibilities with Jason. And then the goal was to try to bring these back to the advisory committee and show you what the outside is looking at and have you evaluate some of that as part of the process and try to get that worked out before it gets back to the council. But the committee has got to show some type of process because the council, you know, is giving us some deadlines. So that's sort of my high level, if you will, what I'm hearing and seeing and I'll shut up.
Okay. Parks Chair, do you have anything to add to that?
Nope.
Okay. So then, do you have, do we have enough to move on from this discussion?
I do.
Okay, I feel like we have a plan and at this time, although I would love for the Parks group to stay and tell us how much they love city government, you're more than welcome to leave.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah. Jason, we appreciate your information and thank you. Did we need to take a quick five-minute recess? Let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess. We'll begin, we'll read adjourn at six o'clock. Okay, so we are back to order. We're going to continue our joint North Bend City Council Park Advisory Committee, North Bend Urban Renewal Agencies. We worked session and we did just conclude with 2A, which was our Ferry Road Park discussion on the golf pilot. And we now are going to move on to item B, which is Level of Police Service. I believe our police chief has some information for us.
Good evening, councilors. I'm going to try to make this, I'm going to try and make policing a less contentious issue than disc golf. Let's see how that goes. Good luck.
We see that nationally.
Yeah, exactly. All right, the topics we're going to cover tonight, kind of a state of the organization of the department. The core responsibilities of the police department and where we feel those need to be. What is prevention's role in policing today here in North Bend? Reporting methods and some changes that may be coming in terms of reporting. And then resource development, which is where we will really need your help. We'll need your help in the rest of it as well, but resource development will be huge. All right, so a state of the organization. By the way, this is why I don't have much hair left on top of my head. This is all too often seen at my desk over the past year or so. So we are at staffing levels of 2016 and 2017. Why is that important? Because 2016 is when I came to you and said, we got to change something. We were overwhelmed in many areas of our department and we are again overwhelmed in many areas of our department. And we have actually seen some reprieve as a result of COVID. And we have actually seen some reprieve as a result of COVID, but I think we'd be foolish to believe that those are going to continue. When I came to you in 2016, we took a different approach. You wanted a full-service police agency where if people called the police, they got a police officer. And so that's what we brought to you with an increase of four officers and a budget to go with it. We don't have that budget anymore. So now we have to take a new approach and that approach is matching the level of police service to the funding that we have available. So let's just take a look at call volume. This is just from 2019 to 2020, okay? So a one-year change. Our overall calls actually went down 13% from 2019 to 2020. That's not a huge surprise to me because of COVID. A lot more people were staying home. There was less travel on the roadways, less interaction between people, less interaction between people means less arguments between people generally. So our overall call volume went down by 13%, but it would be foolish it for us not to believe that they are going to go, go back to historical numbers, which are about 20,000 calls per year, once life begins to return back to normal. And that is generally plus or minus about 3,000 calls for service. In the last year, we've seen domestic violence, disorderly conduct and disturbance calls go up by 19%, okay? And I'm trying to only include those, those calls that have a statistically high number, okay? So when I say it went up 19%, what I'm talking about is 634 calls to 755 calls. Okay, that's a lot of calls. Remember that the staffing levels that we're at from 2016, 2017 has the majority of our shifts working with two officers per shift. The one change to that that has helped us is that we moved to a 10-hour shift so that we get that overlap during real, I say during really high call volumes, but we have really high call volumes from about seven o'clock in the morning until about 11 o'clock at night. So those are up 19%. Criminal trespassing complaints are up 28%. To give you a number there, 743 calls to 954 calls of criminal trespassing. Intoxicated people, drugs or alcohol, someone calls in and reports that this person is not behaving properly, 89% increase. That is a statistically small number, but 27 to 51. And mental health-related calls are up 122% from 115 calls involving mental subjects to 255 calls involving mental health. That's a critical number for us. I don't have to repeat what we're seeing or hearing nationally. It is replicated here. And that is that we don't want to be involved in mental health calls.
No.
We're not the right people to be there. We want mental health care providers to be involved in mental health calls, but they aren't there. So we have some programs that have promise, but we're going to need help. We'll talk about that in a minute. All our violent crime indices are the same. So all those things where you really need a cop, those numbers have not gone down. Okay? So those are generally crimes against people. All right, so what are our core responsibilities? We believe, and certainly you can tell us differently, but we believe our core responsibility is preservation of life and personal, and I included personnel, safety. Because remember that most of our shifts are running with two people. And so pretty much any call involving the preservation of life or personal safety, once it gets to that level, you want to show up with one person. There's a psychological impact to the person you're showing up to talk with when more than one shows up. I could go on for an hour and tell, tell you about the importance of that. So I just, I put this in as, as a general graphic to help you understand where we feel our core responsibility lies. We get called about bad actions, okay? Not about bad people, about bad actions. Bad actions often turn to dangerous action. And dangerous action makes it dangerous because there's generally a victim or a potential victim over on this side. The further apart the dangerous action is from the victim, that's your safety zone, okay? The further apart those are, the better it is. That's where we get inserted, in between the victim and the dangerous action. We wish that every situation we were called to had separation like that. And very often, when we do get called to a situation, our first goal is try to, try to create that separation. However, you do need, you know, I toyed with the idea coming in here and saying, well, one of your options is to abolish the police. It certainly is one of your options, but you need guidance from me. And I don't think that's a good plan. You will still need police particularly to respond to cases where the dangerous action and the victim are like this. Domestic violence incidents, school shootings, direct threats, assaults, okay? Those are all the things where you need us to be there and to, to step in place and protect the victim from the dangerous action, okay? Now, how we do that, given the circumstances, has many different options. So one of the issues that we need to talk about in terms of our core responsibilities and preserving the ability to provide that core responsibility is resource allocation. In other words, once again, remember, we only have two officers per shift. So we have to be careful about where we place them. This is why I added personnel safety to the personal safety, because if I lose one of my people, we're short. And then one shows up instead of two. So I have to be, I have to be constantly conscious of being able to have people available to send to those preservation of life calls so that they're there when you need them. Response methods. This is something that we are working through, that probably every single department in the nation is working through, and that is the guardian versus the warrior mentality. And you can do a simple Google search about that debate and see both sides of the coin. Which is better or which is worse and when should it be employed? I will tell you that in terms of the warrior mentality, that is the school shooting, the, the public shooting, where we have to engage the threat directly and we have to do it quickly. That requires a warrior mentality. However, I think all too often in policing and including sometimes in our department, we engage a warrior mentality when we should probably be engaging the guardian mentality. I'll give you an example. A call to Family Dollar with a subject whose actions are not yet dangerous, but they do involve bad behavior, that people are afraid of, okay? Our method would normally be to enter Family Dollar, by the way, I'm just using that as an example, to enter the store, engage the person, request that they leave the store, and if they comply, great. What happens when they don't comply? Generally, we would engage that person and attempt to use a force response to get them to leave or take them into custody if necessary. What you may see us doing is engaging the compliant people and having them exit the store and leave the bad actor in the store, okay? That's just an example of, of a guardian versus a warrior mentality. Now, taking a guardian mentality in some situations is going to mean there may be some more property damage. However, there's no loss of life and there's less chance of someone being injured, okay? So we have to, we have to understand what comes with those choices. The guardian mentality also takes more time, okay? So when we have that subject who is suffering from mental illness or who's under the influence of drugs or alcohol and there are bad actions as a result of that, we may choose to wait to engage a mental health crisis response team to come and talk with that subject. However, we know because of the stresses on that program, it may be 30, 35 minutes before they get there. What does that mean? It means two of our people, probably our only two people, are going to be tied up for 30 to 35 minutes, waiting for that other resource to show up. That means that other calls are going to wait, so response times are going to get longer. The reason I'm sharing this with you all is because we will need you to educate, to help us educate the public that in taking a different approach, there are going to be some, some caveats that we have to deal with. None of these are ideal situations, but they're necessary. And then property crime and reporting, I'm going to go into this a little bit more, but essentially we need to take a different approach with property crime and reporting of property crime. What's prevention's role? We're going to, we're going to need to place a greater emphasis on citizen-initiated prevention. That starts with educational efforts to help people understand how can you protect yourself better from property or personal crime? Whether there is a role for private security in individuals or businesses' situations. Our library director and I have had discussions about issues that they've had at the library and what's the best and most comprehensive way to address those issues. And the result is that hiring a security company greatly reduces the requirements and, and better addresses the problem. That may, that may fit better with other businesses and, and with citizens as well. Teaching avoidance versus confrontation. This is, this is a tough subject. It seems like as time goes on, people get increasingly more confrontational. And when someone's on your lawn, on your front porch, outside your business, what am I supposed to do with that? Remember that your safety zone is between the bad actions and the potential victim. And the greater you can make that safety zone, the less likely you are to be injured or hurt or anyone else. So once again, not unlike the guardian mentality, that might mean some property gets damaged. That's what you have insurance for, that's what things can get replaced. But we have to teach that because there may be a delay in us getting there, so. And then there are things that, you know, that we haven't discussed a lot about. Crime prevention through environmental design. Setting your sprinklers to come on every 15 minutes. Or planting, plantings that don't hinder the view of windows or that are not comfortable to, to, to be in. Things like Holly or BlackBerry or those kinds of things, so.
Well, or a bench that has a thing in the middle of it, like we did downtown.
Yes, yes. So those are the kind of things that, that we'll be pushing in terms of prevention roles. Investigative and reporting methods. Property crime, we're going to need to implement some citizen self-reporting. Why is that necessary? I don't know why that turned around on me, but it did. So our goal is to reduce the workload on sworn staff so that they're available, so that we have that resource allocation for that preservation of life and prop, of life and, and personal safety. And so property crime is going to, we're going to have to implement some citizen self-reporting, particularly in cases like there are absolutely no solvability factors. You were going on vacation for a week, someone broke into your garage and stole your lawnmower. You have no suspects, no one's seen anything, you have no idea who did it. That's a report that is not going to go anywhere in terms of us being able to find the person who is accountable for that. And you probably just need a report for insurance purposes. We can solve both of those issues by doing it through a citizen, a citizen self-report. We may also see citizen self-reports in cases where prosecution is unlikely. Not unlike many criminal justice organizations, not unlike ourselves, the prosecutor's office is overwhelmed and are basically only prosecuting crimes against the person. And so in instances where they're not going to be taken to jail, they're likely not going to be prosecuted, we, we may have you fill out a citizen self-reporting form rather than seeing a police officer. Traffic crashes where there's no injury, no road blockage, we generally always send a police officer. Any way to help guide people through that process, we're going to have to educate citizens better on how to be able to navigate that themselves, which they can do. And then parking and code compliance complaints. We are working through that, through the budget process. We think we have an answer to those issues that would take some of the weight off of sworn staff for those issues. All right, resource development, this is where we need your help. Overwhelmingly, our officers spend the majority of their time dealing with mental health or substance abuse issues and it is repeated. Dealing with the same 20 people 20 times a day, okay? We need to bolster the Coos County Mental Health Crisis Response Team, okay? That's a really easy statement to make, but that group has been phenomenal for us. And if we could reduce a response time from 30 to 35 minutes down to five minutes, that would be fantastic. It would free up our resources and it would help get the people who need mental health help or substance abuse help connected with the system more quickly, rather than funneling them to the criminal justice system, which is what we were forced to do because there were no other resources to be able to, to handle that. We didn't want that problem and we still don't want that problem. We are there to help those who are better equipped to handle that problem and to keep them safe, but we want and we're pleading for help on that, so.
What's the size of that staff?
Six, seven?
There's two people on call for 24 hours and I want to say there's four to six.
But it's, it's really one to two people on shift.
It's two people for 24 hours and they're for the entire county. And they're, they're spread, they're spread between all the law enforcement departments in, in the county and they're utilized constantly. There's not enough of them, but we also don't have the money to pay them.
Right, that's where I was going with that.
That'll be one of my questions when we get to the end, is how can we bolster that?
Well, and this might go to that effort. Because the second part of it is that we have to develop meaningful treatment programs. I'm not a doctor. I don't pretend to be a doctor. I didn't even stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night. I did on Saturday, though. But I believe this needs to be inpatient treatment or at least we need to keep people in a place long enough for treatment to be able to take effect. We are frequently taking people into custody on police officer holds in the middle of psychosis, transporting to the hospital. The hospital tries to calm them down by injecting them with Haldol and they're back on the street before the Haldol's even worn off. That's not going to provide a solution. And, and we are begging for help on that front. And I'm sure the crisis response team is begging for help on that front. We have to change something about this system because we are chasing our tails all day long.
Every day.
Every day with the same people. And what is that going to take? That is more than law enforcement can handle. That's why we're in this situation to begin with. It's more than mental health can handle. It has to be a community approach. And the major stakeholders here are political leaders who say, "We have to do something about this. We can't afford not to spend money on this." It takes appointed leaders, it takes nonprofits, it takes the health organizations. It, it takes, you know, getting the administration of the hospital together with the administrators at Coos Health and Wellness, with elected officials, with our legislators to say, "We gotta make changes that are going to help this." Because I've only been here eight years, and there are places my family doesn't go anymore because it's just not safe. And it wasn't that way eight years ago. And it's not my fault. Want to throw that out there. But, but this is, I mean, this is a problem, and it's not getting better.
Your answer page was missing with the solution.
Yeah, yeah, I, I see that.
Can I, well, I, you know, just, this is important, but I definitely want to make sure that we're moving the conversation forward. Are there specific things that we, as councilors, should be at right now? And the reason why I say that is the previous council and mayor were called out for not participating in committees for the unhoused and, you know, mental health organizations. So, is there, you know, is there something specific that you think we should have a representation of the council at A, B, and C right now? Mr. City Administrator, do you have the answer page?
Here's number one. I was going to bring it up as we were going to review the agenda under other business, but the Coos Bay City Council Homeless Task Force is asking that North Bend appoint a elected official subgroup to work with a subgroup of their council members on the unhoused issue. So, you're talking no more than a majority of your council. And so, they're asking for that because they want to start looking forward to joint legislation that can help the community as a whole of problems we're both seeing. The second is, I stated to the police chief that we will support and help and encourage and get resources where we can, meaning any mental health grant or opportunity that comes up that can help both cities in the region, I'll get a grant writer to help support aggressively go after that because he's absolutely right. We have to address the, the issue, not keep addressing it. And so, it becomes a shadow government. As we put them into the criminal justice system, the cash register just gets spread out. It, it's almost, so... And then, number three, he's listed out where he needs reinforcement from the council. We're going to change the way law enforcement is done because we have, for multiple reasons, by July first, we will have reverted back to pre-Capman staffing numbers. But there, there is a stick and carrot in all of that. He's made the reference to how we're going to deal with code enforcement. You know, right now, we don't have a code enforcement officer. We're sort of, and that's been a shadow government with us. We're not, we, we don't have a parking enforcement officer right now. We don't have a code enforcement officer. And he's got overtime in dispatch. So, we are working through a position to solve that, utilizing different departments where their resources will be pulled. But like I said, in the proposed July first budget, the public's got to realize that every time you pick up phone and call for an officer, an officer may not respond because if it meets the criteria of a self-reporting or things of that nature, you know, it's just costing us too much to say, "Take an accident report that can be filled out." And, and we have dispatchers can work you through that. And so, I need you to listen intently to what the chief is saying about how the pendulum's going to change because he's not sitting here. And as I told him last week, if I could give you fifty officers, I would. But we can't. In fact, you know, we, I gave the comparison of Coos Bay of when, when the city manager got there versus how many officers they have today. The numbers are not there. The public is not supporting that in the budget, and you have priorities that you have to work within. So, the pendulum is changing, and so, I just want to make sure that the council's hearing, in the simplest terms of what I'm trying to say, is the level of service isn't going to be the same level. We have to refocus the purpose and the focus to stay within the budget with fewer resources, but support through, you know, the homeless task force, some of the legislation, looking at the grants, getting the community to understand that we're going to have to share some of the responsibility.
I think the community's going to have to share some responsibility.
A lot of responsibility.
Boy, this up one hundred and twenty-two percent. That, and like you say, those are your most unproductive calls or unfavorable calls. That's, 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 that's a bad number there, isn't it? Yeah.
Is it working out well that dispatch is going to stay in-house?
The question is, is it working out well? Is it, like, do you mean, is it cost-saving, or?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what perspective you're looking at it. It's working. They're putting in a lot of overtime, more, more than they should be. That unit alone with five people is running between seventy and eighty hours overtime a month. That's a lot of overtime.
That's a lot.
But they are not alone. Our investigator's upside down. He's got way more cases than he can investigate. Patrol staff is upside down. Administration's upside down. So, we're working hard and fast, but we can't keep doing everything we've always been doing because we're setting ourselves up for, for failure. And failure in our business is not, is not a good thing. Usually, it lands you in the papers.
So, as we move through this conversation, I am hearing you say that we, we need to look at the, the information that you gave us tonight and understand that the level of service may be changing a bit as we move into July to meet, or July first, to meet the needs of the department with, in a fiscally responsible way.
Yeah. Some are going to view, you know, we're dancing around the subject. Some people are going to view that the level of police service is going down. I don't want to take that approach. The, how we deliver police services is going to change, and it has to change. But it's going to come, it has to change for a number of reasons. Because of what we're seeing socially across the nation. Because of the need to preserve the law enforcement officers we have left in this community. And be, and for budgetary reasons. We have to change how we're delivering services. And as a result, there are going to be some, some services that we would normally put in the realm of customer service that are not going to be as friendly as they were before. Response times are going to be slower. What we do in given situations and injecting ourselves in a, in a situation that might require a forced response in a situation where the person is likely not going to be prosecuted in the first place, why would we do that? Why would we risk injury to the person or to the officer if we know that that crime is not going to get prosecuted anyway? That makes no sense. Let's find a different way to deal with that. And, and all too often, not unlike the city administrator said, we are chasing our tail, chasing, tracking symptoms of the bigger issues. And those are mental health and, and substance abuse.
So, just one question, some clarification. You know, I don't know if this is even the proper term, but, you know, just patrols. How, how does that work anymore? Is it just, you know, I mean, are you just?
Are you, are you talking about preventative patrols?
Yeah, are you consistently just basing your whole operation on, on phone calls and reports?
We are almost one hundred percent reactionary.
Okay.
The only exception to that is night shift, which does have a lower call volume and allows them to do things like some traffic enforcement when it isn't wholly needed at that time. Probably the greater need, one could argue, is, is during daytime when more people are injured and killed. But there are issues like drunk driving and those issues that happen at night. And then, building security. They're doing a lot of building security, and we are having more, more burglaries, more break-ins in the middle of the night with people inside, found inside the buildings, active burglaries.
Right. Okay, but those are based, those are probably based more like, on, like alarms going off and stuff like that.
Those are response, not preventative.
Not just driving around looking for,
Correct.
You know, for bad people, like.
Correct.
I mean, that's, because that's, that's totally changed over the years.
You know, back in twenty sixteen, I told you that, and, and I think this still holds true because there are psychological factors that don't change in policing because we're human beings. And that is that you would like your patrol to be sixty percent, no more than sixty percent non-discretionary duties. So, allow them to have forty percent of their time to be able to do things like building security, traffic stops, stop and talk with citizens, drive-through neighborhoods, that kind of thing. Back in twenty sixteen, we were at ninety-three percent non-discretionary time, and I would be surprised. I'd be happy if we're at ninety-three percent now. I, I, I think it's worse than that. Generally, officers are behind calls when they get in the car, and they're behind calls when they get out of the car.
That was, that was the purpose for my question because I, I was pretty sure that it was basically reactive-based at this point.
I would like to say that I, I believe that some of the issues that we're dealing with, like, well, I know that the issues with unhoused and mental health, this is clearly not going to North Bend issue, and it's really important for the council to be involved. So, I'd like to volunteer on the homeless task force. And so, if you want to let the, the council know and invite, we could have up to two more, or two more counselors, I would love.
I'll, I'll join in.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would want to volunteer on that committee with me? Because this is where we can advocate for funding. Susanna? Yeah? All right, we've got three people and that we can join and participate in those conversations. I see, you know, I look at what your presentation is. And tonight, you had, your goals were to talk about the state of the organization, what your core responsibilities are, really try to understand the prevention role, what the reporting methods are, and the resource development. Of course, there's a lot more in your report, but I, I want to make sure that the, see if the council has any questions because I feel like you're looking tonight for us to really understand when we see some changes moving forward with the budget, what they're based on. Am I understanding that correctly?
Absolutely. And, and that, I mean, we're charting new territory. Every single law enforcement officer in our agency was trained and lived a law enforcement life that was focused one hundred percent in customer service and being there when you needed us. And it is very hard to go against that core belief and, and say, "I can't come to your call because I have other things I have to go to." That has been the crux of, of the photo you saw with the officer, officer's head in his hands.
Well, Chief, how many?
The pressure's immense.
How many patrol officers do you have? Are we down to now?
Right now, we have sixteen total sworn staff. That includes me and one school resource officer, who is also sworn, but he is one hundred percent funded by the school district. So...
Wow, so we are down to those sixteen, seventeen.
And Counselor Wilson, do you have a comment?
So, we need citizen participation and the understanding of the fact that resources are limited in general, right? We know that. We need some citizen buy-in to make any meaningful change for most things that we do, but this one in particular, right? Is there any benefit to trying to, it takes me back to when I was a kid in the eighties, you know, the neighborhood watch aspect, like spinning up that citizen involvement in making, keeping their community safe, which then may, may actually then promote the mindset that it's super important that we continue to improve the resources around our law enforcement.
Yeah, you know, we talked about this today in our, in our department, among a few of us leaders, that as we take on this new approach, the responsibility and the weight that we feel is, a portion of that is going to be transitioned to the citizen. Is it going to be important that we have things like, like neighborhood watch and that citizens look out for each other, or that they at least learn to be able to look out for themselves? Absolutely. But they should do so in an extremely cautious and educated way. Because even the situations where we have backing and protection in terms of acting within policy and, and legal guidance and protections for us as police officers, common citizens don't have some of those protections. And so, getting involved, every one of us wishes we would go through our entire career without ever having to get involved in a forced response situation. But we know that's not reality. We really don't want citizens to be involved in that.
You know, I, I know we're, we're back in the weeds over at Ferry Road Park as we get into some of this. And of course, I want to be mindful that we're on to be of the conversation. Would there be an opportunity later to have some sort of discussion about citizen involvement? And I, I love what I was hearing about workshops on the type of shrubs that you choose and, and brainstorm, whether it be a town hall or some sort of, something.
Yeah, that's, that's that educational approach, but what I would encourage citizens to do, first of all, is, is just do your research. Talk to your attorney before you make any rash decisions about your own safety. Call and ask us.
You want us to call you?
I will.
Be careful.
I, I still answer the phone for everyone.
Okay. All right, are we ready to move on to the number three agenda?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all that you do, and we thank you for your service, both chiefs, tonight. Yeah, so number three on the agenda is, there's a presentation by the Chamber of Commerce. Is that Mr. Tim Slidell? We have somebody also online. Todd is here.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. I'm here to give you a belated report on your chamber. In 2020, the chamber focused on our time to shine and adapt as we worked on our five strategic objectives. Create a strong local economy, promote the community, provide networking opportunities, represent business issues, and build a strong chamber. However, we experienced two very different types of years during those twelve months. The first section I'll call the normal pre-COVID period of chamber activities. Some highlights of what your chamber accomplished in these first five months included holding an excellent chamber awards banquet, which celebrated our community's successes with over three hundred attendees. Broadcast twenty-five chamber minutes each Monday on BiCoastal Media stations and Saturday in the world. We held ten Wednesday Business Connection luncheons until the public gathering restrictions took effect, with an average attendance of forty-six people to a high of a hundred and two. We also graduated the thirty-first leadership Coos class. We held three ribbon cuttings for new and expanding businesses. BBR Counseling Service at the Denard Building BBR Counseling Service at the Den Art Building on Anderson and Couste Bay. South Coast Hearing Center opened their new office at ten fifty-two Southwest Boulevard in Couste Bay. And South Coast Hospice Thrift Store received a chamber ribbon cutting to dedicate their new donor recognition wall. We also showcased two businesses with Business After Hours program. In January, Edward Jones Investments showcased their financial advisory firm's production, uh, products and services at the Black Market Gourmet. In February, Northwestern Natural sponsored the Directory Distribution Feed at the Couste History Museum. Our Legislative Action Team was actively engaged in the twenty twenty Legislative Session, working hard to weigh in on legislation impacting our business community. Our Membership Development Committee facilitated the February twenty-seventh Membership Recognition and Directory Distribution, event in which sixty-six percent of our members were visited. Then came a very different focus for the balance of the year. The response to the COVID-nineteen virus impact began in mid-March and dominated all personal, business, and community operations. Your chamber has been a weekly source of information and resources concerning both personal and economic health. In the midst of this overwhelming challenge, we continued to shine. For instance, our golf tournament at Couste Golf Club on September twenty-sixth sold out with a record number of teams participating. Scary Sweets, a Halloween-themed cake and cookie auction on October twenty-ninth was a resounding success. WBC reopened between restrictions on October twenty-eighth and November fourth. The Economic Outlet Forum was held on December eleventh and was totally virtual, uh, for the first time and was very successful. The Education Committee funded and gave scholarships to students from Marshfield High School, North Bend High School, and SWAC. Part of the funding came from a pie in the face drive. New members, and yes, there were some throughout the year, were welcomed with flower arrangements from Pedal to the Metal Florist and in mugs provided by the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce Executive Committee. The Chamber Minute continued in the paper and on BiCoastal Media stations for another twenty-seven weeks. Staff pushed ahead with the development of the twenty-twenty-one Community Profile and Business Directory, which was distributed to members and other interested users on February twenty-fifth. With the retirement of longtime Office Manager Pam Cottrell, your chamber entered twenty-twenty-one with a staff of two and energetic Board of Directors and a commitment to focus on success being our journey and not our destination. And thank you very much and remember, our business is helping your business.
Thank you, Todd.
You bet.
We appreciate you and all that you do.
Thank you, likewise.
The volunteer position, right?
Yes, have a nice evening.
Okay, well, that was a good update and very happy to see that they, you guys were able to keep things going. So, um, number four on the agenda, we need to review the City Council Agenda for tomorrow evening. Uh, is our Mr. City Administrator want to walk us through that?
Yeah, the first thing, uh, you'll have, um, citizen recognition that's coming, uh, from the Fire Department ceremonial. Um, after that's a proclamation, uh, from the mayor on National Youth Week that she was requested to do. And then we'll go to employee recognition. Um, uh, changing it a little up historically, um, the council has had specific milestones. Um, and, and talking with staff, um, and at the encouragement of Haley, um, we're going to do them at the significant five, so five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five. Um, because, um, some of the gaps just have wide gap, so, um, it's, it's never hurtful, but it keeps it within council, um, you know, goals to recognize, so we're going to do it the fives.
And will they be here for, uh, will they all be here for a photo opportunity?
Not all of them.
Okay.
Uh, but those that don't have headshots, then we'll just put them on a little popsicle stick.
Okay. And just so I'm clear on the schedule tomorrow night, would you like them to come up here and we can all stand and we can get a photo? Is that, okay, perfect, we will be ready for that, we're your best.
Um, all right, you have, uh, in your packet, the minutes, uh, on page four, those are the minutes from April sixth, twenty-twenty-one. And this is the option, if there's any issues, corrections, additions, deletions, this would be the time. Otherwise, we will be placing it on your consent agenda.
Okay. Hearing and seeing none?
All right. Um, I'm going to ask our, um, Finance Director to come on up because this is new for you. It will be on the consent counter, um, but I want her to review the quarterly financial report. This is new, um, but it's to actually engage more information and transparency to the council and the public.
Thank you.
Jessica?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Uh, so in your packet this evening is the third quarter financial report for the fiscal year twenty-one budget. Um, I tried to provide, um, a resource for how to go through the financial report to help, um, staff, councilors, and the public, um, sort of with how to read it. Um, so the first thing you'll notice is it compares budget numbers to actual numbers and then looks at, um, where we should be at for this portion of the year. So at the end of March, theoretically, we're at seventy-five percent of the year through. So you would anticipate that you've received seventy-five percent of your revenues and your expenditures are seventy-five percent or less. So what this report does, uh, is it kind of has a color coding system. So green means you're on track, yellow says let's keep monitoring, uh, keep an eye on it. Red is something that we would look into a little further and understand why it's varying from, um, that seventy-five percent mark.
And just so you're aware, we don't have, am I missing something? We don't have colors.
Yeah, you don't have colors, we said we'll copy it, so ours is a black and white.
Yeah, just, I feel like I can still track.
Color, color costs money, you gotta keep the budget down.
I can, I can still track it.
But the online version.
Yeah.
Um, so this, this, uh, guide also includes some definitions and acronyms because I know that sometimes, you know, if you don't use those every day, uh, it can be a little confusing as you read some of the footnotes, so I did include that as well. Um, for this first go-around, I can kind of hit each item that I put a footnote or I can just focus more on the red and yellow items. And then if at the end there's questions, we could, um, answer those. Okay, so the first, um, is under General Fund, you'll see the transfers in under Resources. There should be a transfer into that fund from the building fund and it's currently at zero percent. So that transfer in just still needs to happen, you'll see that in the fourth quarter report. Um, typically, I like to do transfers monthly, so one twelfth every single month transfers in or out of the fund.
Could you please speak into the mic?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, the next one is under the Requirements in General Fund. You'll notice that Materials and Services, or you may not notice because yours is in black and white, uh, Materials and Services is flagged as yellow, so that means we just need to monitor. Um, we do have some overages in a couple of our departmental units, um, that we're aware of. So you'll see a budget amendment in the fourth quarter to correct that. Um, and, but currently, the, the fund overall, um, for Materials and Services is under that seventy-five percent mark. So it's just a keep an eye on it type thing. Um, the next one is under the Public Safety Fund, Fund Nine, and that's for transfers in, is currently a zero percent. Um, unfortunately, this budget, um, identified that there's a transfer into this fund from the General Fund, but there is actually no transfer out of General Fund mechanism to make it happen. So that again will be an amendment item in the fourth quarter and then you'll see all of that money shift over as a resource in the Public Safety Fund. Under the State Gas Tax Fund Two, uh, Revenues Line Item, uh, that is at thirty-nine percent. Um, and that's just a timing issue, so, um, the state gas tax apportionments come in about a month or two lagging. So you'll see those at the end of the year catch back up when we do accruals, uh, for June. Um, so then we can skip to the next page. The next, um, red flag shows up under the Waste Water Fund for Revenues. Again, another timing issue. We receive those revenues from the North, Couste Bay North Bend Water Board and they lag about a month behind, so that one looks a little bit low. We are monitoring Personnel Services in the Waste Water Fund. Um, so just so you know how I identify something that's flagged as yellow, is it's usually within five percent of that, uh, target rate. So seventy percent is five percent less than seventy-five, so that's why that one's just a monitor. In the Equipment and Construction Fund, this is another, um, budget amendment item that will happen in the fourth quarter. So capital outlay, uh, was actually overspent this year and what will have to occur in order to correct that is a transfer in, um, to revenues in order to be able to appropriate a higher amount to cover that fifty-seven thousand that we spent since we only appropriated thirty-six thousand five hundred. So you'll see that again in the fourth quarter. In the Improvement Fund, Fund O-eight, um, this is, so for revenues, it's flagged because it's under the seventy-five percent mark, but it's a very low dollar figure, it's interest. And so interest revenues this year were down, uh, largely in part to, uh, interest rates going down because of the pandemic. But again, it's a small impact, the budget was thirty-five hundred dollars, we've received nineteen oh three year to date. Moving on to the Transit Room Tax Fund, Fund Ten. Uh, Materials and Services is slightly under that seventy-five percent mark, so it's a monitor. Under the Pool Improvement Fund, Beginning Working Capital, uh, actually came in about ten thousand dollars less than we estimated when we put the budget together. So, um, that one is showing up as red because it's, it's under. Um, then in Fund Twelve, Revenues, again, uh, this is a timing issue. So those revenues also come in from Couste Bay North Bend Water Board, so there's about a month lag. In Fund Thirteen for Revenues, there was a budgeted grant that, uh, we do not anticipate getting this year. So revenues will remain low in that, um, particular line item because we don't anticipate getting that grant this year. In the Waste Water Capital Fund, uh, revenues are at about forty-nine percent out of that seventy-five percent target rate. Again, this is interest. Fund Sixteen. Um, let's see. Uh, the, the revenues and transfers in, actually, there is no transfer into this fund, so that was an error on my part. Those two should be combined as just revenues. Um, and the hundred and forty-nine thousand is, uh, grant from ODA, it's the Safe Routes to School Grant. And we just haven't received that, or we haven't expended that as a reimbursement item, so, um, till we expend those funds, we won't receive the revenue reimbursing it. Fund Seventeen, uh, revenues are at sixty-one percent and that again is interest. Same with Fund Eighteen, revenues. Moving on to Fund Twenty-Six, Capital Projects Fund, uh, revenues are at forty-eight percent. Again, this is interest only. Uh, same with the PERS Reserve Fund Thirty-four, those revenues are at thirty-eight percent. Uh, and that was interest. This one will require a budget amendment for Personnel Services. So we pay for Great West Life Retirement out of this fund and, um, unfortunately, it was underbudgeted. So again, this will require a budget amendment either to, um, pay for it out of the General Fund or to transfer funds into the PERS or from General Fund. And then the last item I would note is, under the Debt Service Funds, you can see that Fund Thirty-One, the resources total and the requirements totals are off by one dollar. So it will require a budget amendment for one dollar to balance those two. And then there's a number of footnotes, um, that also address some of those green items that are actually on target, but just, you know, may have questions on some. If there's any questions?
I, I want to make a comment that, thank you. This is exactly what I heard the citizens asking for, which was more information, more detail, um, and on a quarterly basis. So back, you know, the councilors, they didn't quite hear that on page eleven. This is where there's, you can go back online and see the highlights of the green, red, and yellow, that they can track what is, um, on track for the expenses. So this is, this is a call to action that was out there from the citizens and you delivered that, so thank you so much. And you're still within two treatments for your job, you're very?
Just hit three.
Just, yeah, so thank you.
First quarter.
You worked very hard to deliver this and I want to recognize that. Councilor Nordoff, did you have a question?
Yes, um, on, on, um, item number twenty-one, the Parks Improvement Fund, I'm, I'm seeing the twenty-eight thousand, I'm seeing the adopted, amended, and then the year-to-date actuals like at twenty-eight times or, could you just touch on that, please?
Sure, yeah, I didn't highlight it because it was in the green because it came in above what, uh, we estimated for the budget. And so what happened is in the prior fiscal year, there was a project that occurred. The project came in under what we budgeted, so we had surplus that rolled over into the current fiscal year.
Okay.
So that is, that money is still sitting there and we plan to appropriate it in the new budget.
So rolls over, so to speak, okay, thank you.
Yeah, excellent, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Is that all that we had from you tonight?
Um, I actually have item D on consent, if you'd like me to.
Sure, is that Haley, okay, if we go straight into D? Okay, and that is the adoption of the updated, um, budget calendar on page twenty-seven.
So in January, the council adopted a budget calendar to keep us on process, uh, with budget development for fiscal year twenty-two. Unfortunately, due to some short staffing in the Finance Department, we are behind on that schedule. Um, so I would like to propose amending that budget calendar. Um, so all of the dates through today are based on what has actually happened. And then going forward, I'm proposing, uh, the major proposals would be to move the Budget Committee meetings from May eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth to June first, second, and third. With the budget hearing, uh, moved to the very last meeting of June before council, which would be June twenty-second. And this still keeps us on track with budget law and should get us an adopted budget by July first.
Okay, so that would be something that we would, um, make a budget adoption on a?
Uh, we'd be putting it on your consent account.
On the consent account.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Okay, I don't see any.
Problems, this is the time to.
Yeah. We're still within the guidelines and ready to move that forward, so I don't see any issues.
Be more thorough, please.
There was no alternative but to put those two Budget Committee meetings back to back, one night and the very next night? That can't be stretched out by a week or something, just?
It can be, I, I went based on past practice and so those three meetings were one right after.
I, I, Councilor Nordoff, I would say for, uh, flow and understanding, because we have ended up going through that book line by line, I would say it's the best practice to have them backed about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Here, and, and.
You're, my.
And, and to keep the interest of the Budget Committee.
Okay, it's easier to just.
Yeah, you got, yeah.
In two nights in a row.
Final.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, got it, I understand, thank you.
Well, hopefully they're not cramming, hopefully people on the Budget Committee are reviewing these documents now, let's, right?
Yes, and I did actually, um, I reached out to the Budget Committee to ask them if the dates were, I got confirmation from three. Um, and one actually asked to have kind of a one-on-one to go through how you read the budget document, so.
Yes, and thank you for doing that additional reading.
Yeah, that helps a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
Yeah.
Uh, next on, uh, we'll bring up our Library Director, um, that has a contract for library security services.
Okay. Thank you for patiently waiting, Haley.
No problem, good evening. Uh, my staff report is pretty comprehensive on this one, uh, as part of our plan to resume regular services. And after consulting with the Library Board and our Police Chief, I obtained, uh, quotes for a uniformed unarmed security service, uh, that will take place during the library's open hours. Uh, and so we are asking the council to accept and award the contract for services to C and B Security, uh, according to the proposal that was attached in your packet. I'd be happy to answer any question.
Short comment, I, I use C and B for two different accounts that I have and they're, they're a good company. And in fact, I've, I've recommended them to the American Medical Center and they took, took and hired them. I think you, I think you got the best of the three, I'll put it that way.
Okay, any issues with that, uh, line item for the consent agenda?
No.
No, but if, if, as long as we're giving accolades to department heads, we know that this has been a really trying year for you. So thank you for making sure that people still have books in their hands and other items that come from the library. So, thank you, Haley.
Thank you for your support.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Haley. Um, the next, uh, X item, uh, this will be your Comprehensive Plan and Text Amendment Transportation Plan. You've already had your public hearings, um, you've already had the, uh, first reading. Um, so this would be handled as a, uh, straight-up, uh, ordinance, um, for, um, uh, since you did not have a unanimous, uh, vote on round one, uh, this gives you round two majority rolls, whether or not, um, it gets passed.
And this is, this is for ordinance two zero four eight?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. City Administrator, if I may, I'd like to make a couple comments about just, um, and it's perfect timing because we just gained a counselor back. So, um, so tomorrow night, um, and moving forward, I want to make sure that we're following the, um, the Roberts Rules of Order to maintain professional decorum, um, again with our council and with people that are participating in our government. And so, uh, with the respect to the Transportation Service Plan, that we already had a staff presentation last meeting and the council had the opportunity to question the, uh, the, um, staff. I was just going to walk through real quick exactly, um, how we would do that. And so we would, I would entertain a motion on ordinance two zero four eight. Um, if I did get a, a first and then a second, um, then at that time, I could have the city attorney, uh, read the ordinance by title only, correct? Okay, and then, um, and, and, and then after that, um, if there's no second motion to continue conversations, then that would fail. But after. But after the title is read, and since we did, we had conversations last, two weeks ago, I would call the question and have each councillor orally vote on how they stand on the ordinance. I know we have Jane on the phone, and I just wanted to make sure that I had that really clear of what would be happening tomorrow night.
Did you have the part, and it's everyone's favorite part, but before you call for the vote, do you have a discussion in there anywhere?
So, once you have a first and second, then tie on, like, and then you can entertain discussion, council rules, limits, the time of discussion, and then at that point, seeing no discussion, you can call the question.
Got it. Okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody understood how we were going to move through that. Okay? All right, thank you for letting me put that in there.
Any questions, issues on that process? Yes.
In other words, we, we, do we have discussion before we adopt the ordinance?
Yeah.
You get a first and second, there will be discussion called, you'll follow council rules on the timing of, and you can only speak once per council rules, and then that is the discussion. Then at any time during that process, someone call the question, or the mayor can call the question, and then you'll actually then go to a roll call vote. If you do not get a second on the motion, it fails at that point, the ordinance fails, and you move on to your next agenda item.
There was discussion concerning the meeting two weeks ago, that in fact, during the agenda item for the public hearing, where the public hearing common is closed, and then there is deliberation, that there is no motion required to go into deliberation.
Hey, Susanna, Susanna, can you save this one maybe till the end of the meeting? Because it sounds like we, everyone has carefully gone through how this is supposed to go, and it's going to be done right tomorrow. So, thanks.
Thank you, Jane.
All right, the next would be Resolution thirty-three oh three. This is the Community Development, Community Development Block Grant. So as part of this, there's, there's multiple things that happen. So as part of the Community Development Block Grant, we've done a agreement with the county. We're now required to do a sub-agreement with ORCA. ORCA is actually who would administer. So the county is our partner, and so we have to have another governance as a partner because we're not allowed on our own to actually go seek the funds. So the county is our partner, ORCA would be the administrator. So this is actually a, a resolution that will, if approved by council, allows us now to move forward with them, go ahead and do the whole application, submit it. We've done our public hearings, and we start to move forward. So city attorneys have worked, gotten the agreement with both attorneys, and they've blessed it, said it's ready to go. So it's on your agenda.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
This is Ralph, you want to come forward? This is the Award of Virginia, Colorado, Striving Pavement Rehabilitation.
How are you doing, Ralph?
He had a, well, I won't, yeah, but you, you can tell him if you want, or, or they'll figure out when he's talking.
I had two crowns and a root canal. Woo-hoo!
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I had two crowns on Friday, root canal this morning.
Before you begin, we'll give you your accolades and say thank you for all that you do. And I know that you're trying to patch it all together.
I am good. Other than on this estimate, we put out this project to bid, and there's a couple reasons why the bids came in higher than my estimate. One was just me screwing up on the demolition estimate and being cocky because I've been really, really good lately. And every once in a while, someone's got to slap you back down and say, you're too cocky and, and get real sun. We actually received good bids. The concrete works up, which was the biggest part of the bid that exceeded my estimate. This is a lot of concrete. You see, it gets cheaper as you get more. For some reason, this went up from a, our prior bids that we've received. It is what it is, and then I messed up a little bit on the demolition. So in getting this bids, we didn't have a major bidder involved in this one, it was Knife River. Part of it is timing. Everybody's booked up this year already, believe it or not.
Crazy.
It was out a little late for a big project, but it wasn't out that much late. We can blame Coos Bay, blame the state, and everybody else. But I got this out a little bit late, therefore the bids are higher than expected slightly, not hugely. And I considered rebidding the project, however, everybody's already booked up. So, and this is monies from, primarily from our STP fund, which is our state fuel tax, not state fuel taxes, our federal fuel tax administered through the state. We pay a six percent handling fee. If we reapply, there's another six percent. So in a case like this, we're an eight percent above our bid, it really, plus the risk of rebidding it, you know, next year, maybe it's better, maybe it's not. Regardless, I apologize for underestimating the cost of this when I put it out, but I recommend that we award the bid. This was last clipped, and they did a good job on Madrona. I expect them to do a good job on this one. And again, apologize for underestimating the cost of this project, so. So Ralph, where, where is this one? I mean, Colorado, obviously, I know where that is. Colorado, this is Virginia from about a hundred feet out of Broadway up to almost Cedar Court. Several years ago, you may not, many years ago, a prior public worker director capped the storm sewer, and it pressurized itself and lifted the whole street. And you've noticed a bunch of cracks and all that. And if you really look at that street very close, it's not just, not just broken up. Originally, on Virginia, we're restriping it, and there's some other issues related to that, but beyond the restriping, it just isn't in a condition that we could restripe it without repaving it. And it gets, I think Virginia gets fifty-two hundred cars per day traffic that segment of it, so. Well, there's a ton of people, even that live in Empire, that use that route. Absolutely. It's one of our highest-traffic, non-state streets, that Newmark and Broadway to the hospital. It is. Okay, I just didn't know where the Virginia piece was. This first piece to Maple, just past Maple and up the hill a little bit.
And as a reminder to the council and the public, this is, like, you have a plan, order of operations of the streets with the most needs, and that you, when there's the opportunity, you use that list.
That was our priority list adopted by council in two thousand and nineteen. Virginia actually booked up a little bit for other reasons, but...
I just like to point that out, so people don't think we're just...
Take them out of a hat, no.
Picking, no. These are, this is much well thought out and determined by your expert team, and I appreciate that.
And Knife River is too busy to even bid. They're booked up till September first. This was due to be completed by August fifteenth.
Okay.
Thanks, Ralph. I hope you get to feeling better with the medications.
I'm fine.
Well, obviously then...
I'm not slobbering.
Obviously, the meds haven't worn off then, if you're fine.
I was going to say, we can get the chief to look at it, mental health or something.
So we have number nine on the agenda is the, for tomorrow night, is the adoption of the volunteer management program. Mr. City Administrator, we have some information on page ninety-nine.
So this is, back at you for the second and final time. We came to, made a presentation to council, asked for feedback. This is the final document, so we're looking to have that adopted by council. Once we feel confident that we're out of a pandemic, we'll aggressively implement it. But does it make sense, in talking to some of my peer agencies, to get into the volunteer recruiting business until we're a little further out of pandemic? And stop being front-page news? Other, other volunteer efforts will, will continue, like the fire department stuff, you know, they're, you know, but they're following very, very strict protocols. The others, you know. But that's before you.
Thank you for tightening.
Any questions on that?
I was going to say, thank you for tightening that, looking at best practices and making sure our citizens are protected.
You give a lot of credit to Haley and the department heads. They worked very aggressively on this plan.
Thank you, Haley.
All right, I'll give my city administrator's report, and then you have committee reports.
And, and Councilor Goll, tomorrow night, will have a committee report. I know that he will have one, and in case, Councilor Wilson wants to slip in a perks meeting tonight before he goes home.
Yeah, I feel like we just have one, so we're good.
He might be, he might be good there.
Then you have council comments. Under Other Business, we'll be bringing up two things. One, we've already chatted about the homeless task force, so we'll be seeking, Mary, if you, that you make a recog, well, actually, maybe have someone else, because you're on it. I guess you could, like, nominate yourself. So I guess you, you entertain a motion, nominate yourself. Councilman Richardson and Councilwoman Nordoff to the homeless task force subgroup with Coos Bay, and, you know. And so that's number one. Number two, the council had brought in the League of Cities, Haley, can you distribute these, to do training. One of the recommendations from the league was that you look and update the rules of the city council. After discussions with the mayor and the city attorneys, in a conference call with the league, I was given direction to go ahead and secure a proposal from them. This is the proposal. It's half the cost of our city attorney, you know, but, you know, that doesn't reflect on any quality. She didn't even smile or laugh, she just looked at me saying, whatever. But you'll see the objectives are listed out here. Ultimately, it's the council's decision on its council rules. But there's a lot of best practices, and when you have the general counsel from the league saying, you know, I work with everybody in the state, and your rules that I reviewed for your training can be tightened up, made better, and so that was one of the main recommendations that she had given during that training. So this is a proposal, it's a timeline, and because it's the council rules administratively, I could move forward, but for not, if the council's not support. You see on the back, the projected lead is the lead counsel, so you're giving the top attorney for the league, and then you see the estimated cost. So I'm open to any questions. This is to your benefit, it's your rule, and we follow them, so, but I was just following up on the mayor and your city attorney's request.
And I was just going to say, I think this fits really nicely into some of our plans and strategic goals for the year as far as reviewing policies and procedures and making sure that those things are tightened up.
Yep.
So tomorrow night, we'll be looking for a motion to, or like a, a motion for you to move forward.
Exactly. Yeah, because I'll be spending money.
It would be good to look at that. There's numbers of things within there that we never touch and never do, so it would be useful to make it consistent with how you want to run things.
Agreed.
All righty.
Okay. I know we had...
URA now?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Number five?
I, did Jane, I felt like Jane wanted to clarify something about the ordinance for tomorrow night. Did I, did I hear her correctly that you wanted to wait?
She said at the end, is it like?
At the end, okay.
At the end, the end, or, at the end of the agenda, or you... She's on mute.
I have no, I don't have anything to clarify. I think there was a question from Councilor Nordoff that I knew was going to not be relevant exactly to what we were talking about at that moment, and I sort of suggested we kick that to the end. I don't have any further comments on the ordinance.
All right. So we have the URA agenda.
Okay, so that, so do I, so we're still in work session, so I don't need to go into URA. We're just going to hear a presentation from you.
So I'm going to go and review your URA agenda.
Oh, sorry.
So now I change hats to your executive director of the Urban Renewal Agency. Mayor calls it to order, you have a approval of the agenda, you have an opportunity for public comment. You have a resolution here at this point. We will ask your library director to come up and talk to you about the requests for qualifications. You've heard about these in the past, but now it's time to actually take action.
Thank you. So, okay, thank you.
Okay. So to refresh or to review our past work, in twenty-twenty, the library completed an initial architectural and engineering assessment of the existing facility, which is located in the urban renewal district. The assessment and the final report demonstrate a significant need for renovation at the facility. As you all are aware, many of the elements, the, everything from the furnishings to the fixtures, the carpet, it's the main part of the library, are original to the library's opening in nineteen eighty-nine. And that building is well-loved and at this point is well-worn. So we are asking the Urban Renewal Agency to advertise and request statements of qualifications or proposals from firms with substantial experience, architectural firms with substantial experience on similar public works of improvement to provide us with professional services for renovation planning. Our initial concept includes expanding the library's program and meeting facilities and refurbishing the existing portion of the library, but we would be contracting for services that would really take this all the way through. So additional community input, design, engineering services, and all of that is outlined in the attached document, the advertisement for qualifications. So the staff recommendation would be approval to advertise for schematic design and preparation of pre-bid documents. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about our project.
Okay, no questions.
What, didn't, didn't, like, prior to we come on the council, didn't you do a big survey that said you needed however many million dollars of changes?
We did. That's the study that referenced here, and it was an architectural and an engineering assessment. They went kind of top to bottom on the building, and they looked at all the mechanical, the structural elements, both exterior and interior in the building. And what they did was identified community needs. There were some public listening sessions and a survey that was conducted. They provided us with a list or a menu of items that need to be addressed in the facility, and they prioritized those for us. They said these are items that are essential, and that if you want the library to last another twenty years, you need to make them a priority. They also provided recommendations that would help enhance the building and make it more energy-efficient, for example. And then they did provide some initial cost estimates, Councilor Goll, and they aligned those cost estimates with the priorities that they gave us with that menu. So the options presented in that initial report range from about seven hundred to seven hundred and, to eight hundred thousand dollars of repairs that could be done to the existing building, to basically shore it up, to a multimillion-dollar renovation that would make it fully earthquake-proof, and that would really kind of take the facility to the next level. So that initial study kind of gave us an idea of what we're dealing with and some recommendations for what we may want to do, and gave us a picture of what that would look like and what kind of resources would be necessary. And this is the next step, in which we would gather further input, we would work with the council or the Urban Renewal Agency to determine the best course of action, to determine what resources we have available and what the priorities are for our community, and then to actually develop a design for the project. So what would a renovated and improved library look like? So it would take us to the next level.
So whatever we paid, whatever we paid for that one, and then you're looking at this one being five hundred thousand?
No, the five hundred thousand is what has been budgeted in the current fiscal year for a... No, the $500,000 is what has been budgeted in the current fiscal year for a library expansion. So there were dollars-
I misunderstood.
Yeah, there were dollars that were-
We already paid a bunch for a survey and then going to pay another 500, so, all right, okay.
Yeah, so there were dollars earmarked in the U R A general fund for a library expansion, and that is not specifically designated for professional services, but David has let me know as the executive director of the U R A that that is an allowable expense.
It's important that the council knows that this is a RFQ. When the RFQ goes out, any awarding of a contract still goes before the agency. And so, once we go through the entire selection process, it comes back for you to bless it and award a contract.
I got it. All right, thanks.
We'll do more steps before any construction would start.
That's right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, nice to meet you. All right, number five here is the South Coast Development Council membership. The city used to be involved, has since opted out. When, so I'm fresh eyes on the ground. I will tell you that I've been working with S C D C since almost the first week that I've gotten here. They're a strategic partner with the city, but we're not a partner with them for economic development for the city and region. The S C D C focuses on the entire region for job growth and development, and there's not always a one-to-one correlation to your city, but it avails us to the resources and has us at the table. I discussed this with the mayor. They are at their sort of annual membership drive. And so I looked at the U R A budget and said that there is some funds in there, and it suggested that I bring it to the U R A to decide what level of participation, if any, the board would like to have with the S C D C.
Okay, I see a question from Councilor Nordoff.
I, I think that it's a good idea if we were to sign back up with S C D C. However, I do not think that it should be under the Urban Renewal Agency's umbrella of funding. It is not specifically an urban renewal project, and I think we will be, we would be wise not to start down that road. If we're going to appropriate dues to join up with the S C D C again, it should be from our other regular funds and not urban renewal funds, because we will have other things to do with those urban renewal funds.
Is there, can I have our city attorney chime in on that?
Well, it's not really a legal question. It's, the counselor gave you an opinion. Each counselor is entitled to opinion. But as the executive director, every single opportunity that I'm working with, with S C D C is in your urban renewal, because it's going to take urban renewal dollars to make these projects happen. So we're not trying to do a cat and mouse or a shuffle game, if you will. You all have council goals. You've made it very clear to the staff. And so carrying over some of those goals is why we have looked at the urban renewal for those professional fees and professional services, because that is where we're aggressively trying to coordinate grant efforts, job efforts, and urban renewal.
That may not always be the case, though.
Counselor Slater?
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, we've had some issues with who was running the show over there and how they were doing that. And I'll have to say, if you look at the last two or three years or more, the changeover in how they're structured, what they're accomplishing, how professional they are at doing that is substantial. And so far as, and we truly sink or swim as a region economically. I mean, we can cheer, if Bannon gets some manufacturing bank, we can cheer for them because it all impacts our businesses and the things around here. So I, I think they have proved themselves well over the last several years, and we would be, we would be good to join and actively participate.
Is there another counselor that had a comment before I go back to Councilor Nordoff?
I spent probably 12 years on S C D C representing the city of North Bend, and I think Tim's correct. I think that when it first started through probably three years ago, where some of the major contributors decided to opt out, I think actually some of them have opted back in, if I'm not correct, since I think Sean has taken over. Sean Gibbs is the director now. Is that correct?
Right, yeah.
So, you know, maybe it is time for us to revisit and, you know, have a, have a seat at the table. I'm not sure which counselor would be the representative, I mean, at this point, but, I mean, we can discuss that later. But, you know, personally, I think that it's, it's a good thing for our community. I think one of the biggest problems in the past was the, the fact that people from other counties were getting involved with the South Coast Development Council. And I think there's some people that had heartburn about Florence and Brookings and, you know, being north and south of, you know, our core area. But, you know, and what is determined to be the South Coast or the Central Coast or... I think that was kind of all in the mix, but, you know, I believe too that, you know, we all should have skin in the game and be part of this program because it is, it is a community effort. It is, you know, a Coos County and South Coast, no matter what your borders are, I think that we need to go beyond that.
Well, before we see if Councilor Gall and Councilor Gleason have anything to add and back to Councilor Nordoff after that. I want to make a point here that this is something that we could revisit every year. Is that correct, David? Are we committing?
That's correct. It's done annually.
And I want to make sure I make that point to Councilor Nordoff, is that, because all the current things, and I want to make sure every counselor gets to speak before I call back on you, but if, you know, the things that our city administrator has been working on for the past six months are all urban renewal related with the S B D C. If we ever felt, just like we did before, that it did not align with this, we could pull out for the next fiscal year. So that's something to keep in mind. Councilor Gall, did you have-
Yeah, I just had a comment that, you know, there, at the time we got out of it, there was, in our hearts, there was a reason we got out of it, and things could possibly, you know, if David's got a relationship and it seems to be a positive one, you know, that's when you make a move, I'd say.
Okay. Counselor Gleason, do you have a comment before we go back to-
I think it's, I think it's an absolutely great opportunity to take, because this is an annual thing, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
We're not, we're not saying we're going to pay for it with, with UA funds right now, and it's going to be that way forever and always. We're saying that as of right now, with the way that David has been working with S C D C and the projects that we've been working on, anyway, I think it's a great idea. I think it's, I think it's the best plan for us going forward, at least, if we want to continue that growth mindset.
All right. I know we do have another counselor online, if he's still there.
Actually, as of seven o'clock, I just confirmed that. So he has departed, so we have noted for the record that he left at seven.
Okay. So let's, Councilor Nordoff, do you have another comment?
Yes, I was wondering if we might ask for a seat on the executive board of that-
We'd get one, don't we?
-agency.
There's actually a process, so you actually can, once you're, once you have a membership, when it comes up, you can run and put your name in the hat to get a seat. The, the reality is, personally, you know, if it was like me, you know, if you all want a seat, by whom needs, I'm glad to have anybody on there. I'm utilizing resources for the city. And so when I look at U R A versus city, this Royal City isn't doing any development or economic development, if you will. Yes, we will benefit. I'm using the resources for everything in the U R A, and you're, you're aware of those projects.
Okay. I see a note on here that there, there is an amount that says that it's remaining in professional services for urban renewal of $12,203.
And that would allow us, I checked with Coos Bay. I know there's a differential in the city, and so I, from a staff side, would recommend $10,000, which is what I would recommend. And then when the budget comes up, we'll recommend the same thing for the following year. And again, it's always at the discretion of the U R A board, if you want to change it. But given the connectivity, the resources, you know, you have asked us to build relationships, and we certainly do that, and S C D C has been at us. In fact, we just had a call on Friday about a project. And so what they are doing is they are greatly helping me establish connectivity on, on projects and bringing resources. They've also brought us grant opportunities. So to me, it's well worth the investment for that seat at the table and to, you know, you're the second largest city on the coast, so that's my recommendation.
Yeah, there's a lot of good networking there also. There's a lot of people from a lot of different walks of life and businesses that are involved in S C D C.
And at that point, you would be on the board, or the city would be on the board. And then, so far as the executive committee or whatever, you can run for those things, but you're a voting member of the board at that level.
I will tell you that from day one, they have treated me as if I was on the board. I just haven't had to vote, but they have included me from day one.
Yeah.
And, and that says a lot.
That's good.
It appears that everything aligns with what we want to do in the city of North Bend, and we can review it every year if, if it ever changes. Okay, so was there anything else on U R A? Was there anything in other business tomorrow night for U R A?
No.
Okay. So then that would be our U R A, and I believe tonight we do have some executive?
But we, this was a error, staff error, so I'll take responsibility. But we had advertised public comment on the dropdown. It just didn't make the agenda. So if it's the, will the mayor entertain public comment, I think we had one. Oh, they dropped off. Well, you can, we have a couple that we entered into the record that, after distribution, but given the lateness, they dropped off. But I covered that, so executive session is the last part.
Okay. So if I'm not seeing anything else that we need to discuss tonight?
No, there is one other thing, because I keep looking back. There's questions. We have another agenda item, number six. I knew, I was looking at the U R A agenda saying, but there's another one, because I have my documents here. And I'm like, where is it? So, thank you.
Good evening again. So this is, in front of you, you should have two documents, kind of a green and a yellow, these should be in color, and then another one with some highlights. Yes, sorry.
Thank you. What order are we looking in?
Looks like this.
Tell me if you don't have it. Yes.
And there should be one more with some highlights right behind it.
Exhibit A.
Well, this one actually has colors.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
So this is an exercise David and I met last week to preliminarily review the budget for fiscal year '22, and we got to U R A, and we've identified a couple of things that we will recommend in the budget document, but also wanted to gather some input from the agency to see if there are other projects, which those are the documents listed in front of you, that align with goals that you may also want us to consider for recommendation in the fiscal year '22 budget. The list is a little longer than I anticipated when I went to print it this afternoon, so. There are a number of them there. I thought it might be helpful to also let you know the projects that were identified in the current year's budget, just to do kind of a quick little status update. And then if there aren't any projects that we want to add in addition to the two that David and I will recommend here in a moment, then what would happen is the, the remaining funds would just be rolled into a capital outlay item, line item called community development. So the funds would sit there until maybe at some point throughout the year, if there were grants or some other form of revenue that came in, we could then appropriate those for another use. So the two that we've identified, one would be a rollover of the library expansion, $500,000. And then the second is the facade improvement program, which in current fiscal year is $75,000, and the recommendation is for $125,000 in fiscal year '22. In current year budget, there is a line item for the Little Theater on the Bay, which I understand that project is done, so that one would likely not roll. There's also the Visitor Center slash Simpson Park is identified for $800,000. We believe there's some money identified in the room tax fund to assist with the visitor centerpiece. But I do believe that Exhibit A in front of you, that should be the Simpson Park element, and I'm not sure the amount of those, so I'll have to do some research. But so that might be something for consideration to roll forward. And then the rest was rolled into a community development line item for $650,000. So currently, projecting about $2.8 million available for capital outlay. And again, $500,000 of that we're recommending for library expansion, $125,000 for facade improvement, so it leaves just under $2.2 available if there's any other projects that the agency would like to.
Do you think we're going to spend that much on facade improvements? I mean, how much did we spend last year?
So, the executive director has some ideas, because we're going into budget time.
That's where I was going with that, too.
This is, this is a new U R A board. You have a new U R A executive director. You have a new finance director. This plan here has you all in handcuffs. When some of these plans and opportunities come up, these are all like in holding cells, and you can't release or change, you, you know, which, which is why you heard your finance director make a couple key words there about the what fund? Community-
Oh, community development?
Development, okay. Because as plans come up that you need to act on, you, you have parked something in a parking space that you can't move. So you've got to really decide, is this, as a U R A, what you want? And is it fully in line with your, your U R A plan? Now, in your council-approved goals, you said, for instance, that the facade program was very important to you. And so staff is going to work on revitalizing that, rewriting that, and bringing it back to the U R A to approve, because trying to get the facades downtown to look alive is part of the urban renewal of getting it alive.
Yeah.
And so you have seen Coos Bay has recently revised theirs, if you're not aware. They've even gone as far on some of those plans 100 percent. We have to incentivize and try to get folks to do it, but there's also got to be carrot and stick. It's like, you know, my suggestion and recommendation is that if I approach your business and say, "Mayor, I want to, you know, do your business," you'd say, "You can't, because I'm on the board, and it's conflict interest. Go see someone else." So I go over to, you know, Billy Joe Jim Bob and say, "We want to work with you on your facade. Don't have the money." The U R A does. We got to work together with some of our partners, such as the S C D C, the local universities. We get it drawn up. We bring it back. And if you approve it, we do it, but we also then have certain commitments. For instance, not only is it a facade grant, we can also then get them into the easement grant, where a facade easement then says that that easement has to be protected under historic preservation, so you just can't allow it to go into disrepair derelict. So you have sort of a carrot and stick. It's all- It's all what you want of your revitalization. So we, we have started to look at what other cities are doing, what best practices, what's worked, what's not. And as we draft that, we'll bring it back. You also then, you know, look at tourist information building, okay? I know that one of the last things the last council did before they changed over was they talked about, you know, all this at Simpson and the issue with the million-dollar turnoff from ODOT. And then, you know, we, we sort of have said, is that the proper fit or location? Well, you can partner with your tourism tax fund because sitting in there is a half a million dollars as well for the same line item. So there's ways to reinvest in your community and make things happen. But if you have some of these allocated, you have basically backed your car in and, and handed the keys over and said, "We'll see you in a year." Or you've said, "URA, staff, go, go, go do these projects." So during the budget time, we either have to be a little more global with the money and as the projects come up, give the board more opportunity to say yay and aye and be able to pull from the pool. You have to really look at the vision of what you're doing, how you're doing it. You know, there are a couple of projects that you're aware of and because it's executive session, but you sort of kind of have yourselves backed in a corner and you want to get out of that corner a little bit.
So this project list was probably developed before 2012, but adopted in 2012, correct?
And some of it has carried over?
Yeah, so it's, it's outdated for sure.
And some of the stuff's already been completed.
2014.
That's what I said, some of it's already been completed. So I mean, it's like...
So tomorrow night, would you be looking for a consensus from the council to give the, the executive director of the urban renewal to move forward with some capital outlay projects?
Well, we're not asking for any spending. We're, we're needing guidance so that we can put together your proposed budget.
And it's actually not on the agenda for tomorrow night, so this is just a session.
Yeah, so we're wanting feedback tonight. What do you want to happen, you know, in the budget process?
So we have some time to really think about this individually?
Not a lot of time, because we do have to draft the proposed budget and then it'll go before Budget Committee for their recommendation. So it is something we're looking for in advance of going to the Budget Committee.
Yeah, because I haven't seen this, haven't seen this since we adopted it.
I'm not going to lie. The conversation that we had is like, wow, where'd you come up with this? Because I've been looking at my budget book and everywhere else. And, and she has pulled out stuff that like wasn't in the budget book and, and high-level stuff. And so we, we, you know, it, it, it's just, I'm so grateful that she's on board. She's here. She's keeping us straight and narrow. But now I actually have something that I can come to the board and say, "Okay, we need to tinker with this." Because if, if we get it into the budget and get it adopted, it's, the law prohibits us then for a whole year from going another direction with those funds.
So how about, I propose that we come back during a work session with some guidance based off of our strategic goals that we adopted. And is that, is that kind of the timeframe that you're looking at? Like is...
What's your sort of drop-off?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me grab my calendar.
Because I've marked off here tourist information building, facade improvement grant, property acquisition fund. And then I'd move everything else into that community fund and let you all decide as projects come up. The, you know, you, you sort of, the pendulum has shifted from status quo, not do projects, to a council that wants to do some projects. But you got to have money to do some projects.
But I think, I think we've only got two commitments still out there, right? The Little Theater.
Be careful when you say the word commitment. I, I only guide you and the city attorney's here. And we'll talk about that in executive session. So sort of refer the projects, but the Little Theater, we signed off and made the final payment. That is finished, that's complete.
That was phase three, correct?
Yes. So if they come back and make a request, that's another thing. But, but that project is done. What's the other project that you have an interest in?
Uh, well, I don't have an interest in it, but I know we got a commitment to the traffic light.
See, there's that word again. So...
What was I supposed to say? Yeah, okay, all right.
Well...
So at this point, what I hear...
Responsibility, maybe?
There you go. What was that word you said?
Could use responsibility. We have a responsibility to them perhaps.
So what I hear Jessica saying, so we can, can, guys, hey, make me, sorry. Can't hold you, sorry.
Don't make me count you.
I was trying to get you more money and you shut me down.
There's a reason.
This, this needs to have further conversation. We need to discuss it potentially in a work session. But I feel like I'm hearing you say that you don't know always what the projects will come up. So it's not like you want to spin out the whole amount because something in the urban renewal presents to us. And if it's, we still would go back to our strategic goals and our plans, see if it fits. And we always have a vote on how to move forward with it. But the way that this document is writing, written right now, it does not give us a lot of flexibility.
Correct.
Okay, so tomorrow night, no, yes?
Could we do it under other business tomorrow night? Otherwise, I don't think we have a meeting in advance of what...
You could, because it still has to go through the whole process. So yes, tomorrow night, you could, under other business, add this. Because it's still at that point just direction us and we're creating it so we can publish it because they still have final say.
It always comes back to us as a vote.
And, and in doing so, I would list my recommendations. So just note it's just a reminder, I'd only list four things and let you know of others. I would list the tourist information building, the facade improvement grant loan program, the property acquisition fund, and then all else goes into that community, what do you call it?
Community development. And don't forget the library.
Oh, yeah, oh, the library. Oh, yeah, sorry. Five, thank you.
And I just, I feel like...
There you go, the library.
Because otherwise, I just defunded you.
Yeah. And I, I just, I really want to make sure that all the counselors are listening. It's still not like a, a free check that we're giving to the right. It still comes back to the urban renewal, but it allows us...
It all comes back to you all.
Yeah, so this is not a...
You're just classifying it.
Yeah.
Yep.
To...
So not a legal word, no?
Uh, yes, yes. No, understanding executive session. I, I should tell you, there's a reason why.
All right, okay.
So was there, uh, that is the, that was number six on the urban renewal agenda for tomorrow night about the capital outlay. And then I believe the next thing on our agenda is to move into executive session, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Mayor needs three and a half minutes. So we're going to take a three and a half minute recess. Eric, Counsel Gleason, please start the clock, the watch now.
That's very, that's very specific.
I know.